You know, people who didn't vote for me, you don't know me very well. So, get to know me. I'm an honest, straightforward person. I have no agenda. I've lived in Bonita for 40 years. My family's been paying taxes in Bonita for 72 years. Bonita is special. We never had potable water until like '71. Otherwise, it was this real strange smell of sulfur water. So, that kept everybody away. My aunt and uncle had a restaurant. They opened morning, noon, and night, and ran the bar at night on Old 41. It's now called Maria's. I sure do feel honored to help the city of Bonita Springs move into the future and remain a friendly city. My uncle was the founding commander of the American Legion of 303. And my aunt was one of the charter members of the Women's Club of Bonita Springs. She never met a straight. So, I want to be fair to everybody and be friendly with everybody. And I hope you can do that to each other. Well, I guess we got an invocation coming? Let's see. Am I on the right order here?
No, call to order.
Call to order.
Okay. We have invocation. Please stand for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my privilege to pray for you, the council members, and the staff. So, let's join together in prayer. Dear Lord, we love our city, and we want it to be the best possible place to live. And we thank you for raising up from among us men and women who will lead us and guide us. We pray for them because they have a serious responsibility. We pray that they'll be given wisdom and fairness and discernment, the ability to understand and to hear, to make wise and careful decisions that impact the most. And we pray, Lord, that they'll be able to find ways to work together and to be effective as a team. And we pray that you'll continue to guide our nation in challenging and difficult times. Lord, bless America. We pray again. I ask this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to pledge allegiance. I'd like to lead us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I need you to help.
Ah, okay. Oh, here we go. Have roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Present.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Yeah, the first thing on my agenda is to ask for a continuance on addendum 12.
We did... I'm sorry.
Huh?
Public comment first. Number six.
I run this meeting, Lutz. I'm running this meeting, Jesse.
Why are you not in there?
Yes.
Read the agenda.
I'm making...
It has to go in order.
Quiet.
It has to go in order.
I'm the mayor.
I understand.
This is a little different. I'm allowed to do this.
It has to go in order. You haven't even called the meeting's order yet.
You had roll call.
You have?
I don't want to debate you, sir.
It's not a debate. Follow the process.
Don't interrupt me.
Follow the process.
The first thing I've...
Call to order, City Attorney, please.
I think I've spoken with the mayor on this issue. He's asking for an item that was put on by addendum by myself to be continued to another meeting so that he can get some additional backup information. If the question is, what's the next step in order? My recommendation would be to wait till that item comes up on the agenda and make the continuance at that time. On your...
Derek?
Yes.
The reason I bring it up now is I don't want public comment on something that's not going to be... That's going to come up that I'm going to ask for a continuance.
I completely understand.
So, don't waste their people's time. Okay?
All right.
So, the first item on here, I'd like to make a continuance for the addendum on number 12, which calls for...
And green sheet number, sir?
It's item number 12A under City Attorney's Items.
The addendum...
I'm sorry. No, sorry.
The city doesn't have a number, I don't think.
Yes, it does.
Green sheet 355.
It's the one about the giving away the power to settle these lawsuits to you and the city manager. I need more information. I want to know what the insurance company is involved in it. We talked about this the other day.
And I'm happy to get you that information.
Maybe I'm out of order, but this is what I want to do and why.
I'm happy to get you that information.
So, I need a vote.
Do you have an idea when you'd like to continue that to the next meeting?
Legally, do we have to have public comment first or no?
Legally, you have to have public comment on any item that is coming for final action.
Okay.
Since this would be a continuance, it wouldn't necessarily be something that needs public comment on.
Thank you.
And perhaps to address the mayor's concerns about continuances in the future on other items that may be... Public may be in attendance for and to not waste the public's time, we can add an item to the agenda that indicates changes to the agenda at the outset of the meeting. That way, we can rearrange things accordingly for future meetings.
Okay. Derek, I still don't understand what... Is it number 12 here? I don't understand what we're continuing.
It's the first item on the addendum. It's the item relating to the creation of a negotiating committee.
Okay. Thank you.
For the pursuit and settlement of small claims.
Green sheet 20A. Okay. Well, I would like to have a discussion on it. If we're going to move this way and we're just flowing, you're one vote. You are mayor, and you may run this any way you want, but I would like to have a discussion on it. I'm sorry. That's how we... You know, it is a, you know, democracy, a republic still.
You're not following me. I want to have a vote on the continuance of that addendum that just came up.
Great.
And nobody's had a chance to read.
Well, you have to get a second.
I'd like to vote, bring it up now so that the public does not have to or does not need to comment on something that we, I, don't completely understand. That I want more clarification.
Well, that's the key pronoun, isn't it? Is it "we" or "I"? So, can we move to...
Excuse me. Point of order. I'm sorry. Everybody take a breath here, please. All right. We're... This is a new time. We're all...
I can't hear you.
Okay. This is a new experience for all of us, all right? So, let's calm down. The mayor has made a proposal to move an item that's in the addendum up in the agenda. And I do agree, and Derek could correct me, that he needs to... You have to propose that. That's Robert's Rules of Order. So, if somebody wants a second, then we can consider that.
I will second this so we can move.
Okay.
Okay. So, now discussion.
Okay. So, what is everybody's feeling on it?
I'd like to hear from staff.
I have no objection to continuing it to a future meeting so that I can inform the mayor or any other council members who have questions about it.
I'm good with going ahead with it. I did know about it, looked into it, and so I'm familiar with it. I'm sorry. I did do that.
I'm fine with continuing it.
I'm fine to continue it.
So, Mr. Mayor, there's a motion and a second. Doesn't appear to be any more discussion?
Nope. No call. I thought we were voting on the fact that we wanted to move it forward. Isn't that supposed to be voted upon?
First, yes.
First. We need some help here. All right.
I understand.
Would you please help us to understand Robert's Rules of Order so that we can conduct our meeting in a professional way? That's what I want to do, irrespective of what the outcome is.
I understand. So, the... Trying to give everyone a little leeway for their first new meeting. The motion now should be to adopt with a second to move the item forward on the agenda so they can be considered now. It should then be followed with another motion and a second to continue it to a future meeting. And with those two votes, we would then move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be public comment.
So, is that the motion that's on the floor to move it forward?
Seeing no objection from the motion maker, the seconder.
I have a second.
Will you read it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, the two steps is the first vote will be to move the item up on the agenda to this point so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Debbie will do a roll call on that item. And then the second, there'll be another motion to continue it thereafter.
Continue.
And so, there'll be two votes.
I have a motion to move item up. Move an item.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Now, if we could have a vote on continuing that addendum.
Would that be a motion, sir?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any conversation about?
I think we've covered it. We're ready for a vote, I think.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we go to public comment, I believe. Anybody from the public that would like to address... I believe, Derek, there's... Everything else is a public comment available?
So, this public comment would be public comment on anything on the agenda. There is a specific zoning and land use item, which is the next item on the agenda, which will have its own public hearing. So, anyone who wishes to speak on that item, I recommend you please wait to hold your comments till that item comes up if you would like them to be part of the record. Thereafter, there will be no public comment on items individually called, but there will be another session for public comments later in the meeting on any subject.
Let me say, the second... The second reading is no comment at this time?
No. The second reading should have public comment when that item gets called individually.
You can do that now. Okay. Say your name.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Dwight Estman. For the record, Paradise Road area. I sent all the council members an email, a couple of emails concerning my... About my concerns about the food truck park. Several of you were kind enough to let me know that you got it. So, I'm not going to waste your time going over all those points. Anybody in the public want to know what I said? You can look it up online. I have printed out copies, given it to each one of you. And I did that because sometimes when I speak, it's three hours before we actually get to the topic that I've spoken about. So, I wanted you to have a copy. I do want to question whether the little five-page, six-page summary that's online is considered public notice. So, I hope you'll take my concerns seriously, that you'll have a lively discussion on this issue and consider that it really reflects what downtown's going to be forever. Thank you. Have a good day.
Derek?
We still...
Okay. Marzen?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Congratulations, Mayor Steinmeier.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, and other council members who are reelected. I want to not only congratulate you, but tell you why I think you won. Because you're an honest guy. You always say what you think. And you have the heart of a servant. And I think that's what public service is about. And all the years that I've known you, you've been out serving this community. I don't think people were aware of how many connections you have with how many people, with how many things you've done here these many years. So, I want you to continue that, which I think you're doing, taking this responsibility on, and to engage the community once again, be the very engaged city of Bonita Springs that we used to know, that used to come to these council meetings, and encourage all the citizens to meet you, get involved with you, get involved with the council, get involved in their precinct, their district, contact their district council person, like I do, and just really make the city a friendlier, like you said. I love that. You said a friendlier, more engaged, civically responsible city. So, thank you for saying that, Mayor. Next, food truck park. You know, we didn't invest $58 million downtown to have another park. I know it's a park with like amenities to it, but we have restaurants that are really hurting. I know everybody's looking forward for downtown redevelopment and get something in there. We have a little hiccup in the economy right now. I think it's going to pick up. Land is becoming... Land is becoming less... Is becoming more scarce. So, we're going to have a great commodity down there. The Levin property was bought to be redeveloped, no doubt, which is the site that you'll be looking at. So, anyhow, totally against that. I think you have the votes to turn it down. I'm just saying that you should really think about long-term view, urban planning. What do we really see? They wouldn't put this on Fifth Avenue in Naples. Why are we going to put it in Bonita Springs? Are we less than? No. We're actually greater than, but that's my opinion. Next, and finally, you have the choice for a deputy mayor today. I love my council member. Mike's engaged a lot with the city council, and I hope that he'll become even more engaged in our district. I know that he works a lot. So, I would recommend Councilman Fred Forbes. He's retired. He worked for Governor George Voinovich in Ohio. He's got extensive connections with our Lee County delegation and statewide with other city officials and with state officials. So, I would just think that Fred Forbes would really work for us and be able to be engaged. He's retired. He has a lot of time. And he's an architect and engineer, so what could be better? Thank you.
Thank you, Marzen.
Is there any additional public comment on any agenda items? I do not see any additional public comment, Mr. Mayor.
No more public comments?
Has the applicant arrived for the zoning ordinance up for consideration? I'm seeing from Ms. Gibson, Mr. Mayor, that the applicant for the second public hearing and adoption is not present yet. I believe my understanding is that they had a confusion as to what time the meeting started. They believe it started at 9:30, so they may be running late. If you would like, we can begin the item or we can continue it till later in the agenda and move forward with the remainder of our agenda, whatever the council's pleasure is.
Okay. Jacqueline Gibson, Gibbons?
Good morning. For the record, Jacqueline Gibson. We do have the applicant's agent here. It's just the property owner who flew in to be present for the case. He is running a little bit late from the East Coast. So, he'll be here hopefully in 10 minutes. It's up to you. I'm happy to go first. It's just our presentation. We kind of coordinated. So, my presentation's a little streamlined, but it's up to council's pleasure.
I suggest we go ahead.
I'd second.
Comments?
Okay.
Roll call.
Just to clarify, this is to go forward with the presentation? I don't think we need a vote if there's consensus among the board members. To just move forward the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. For the record, Jacqueline Gibson, again. I'm going to have the applicant's agent go ahead first with their presentation, and then hopefully Mr. Sheehan will be here, and he can go ahead and close.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Stuart Rogers with Mazur Consulting in 5471 West Waters Avenue in Tampa, and I represent Channel 30 Drive CPD. Very simple amendment. This CPD was approved back in '09 for two self-storage buildings, and there's also a small office component to the project. It was approved in '09. At that time, it was a five-story building and a three-story building. And our amendment today largely is to make it two four-story buildings. And what that does is reduce the overall height of the tallest building back down 10 more feet, back down to 50 feet. There's a few small other items involved as we went through the review with staff. But in summary, that's the largest change really that's occurring with this amendment. The result of the amendment is that the larger building went down a story, the smaller building went up a story. So, the net was we lost a few square feet. So, I went from what was the original 172,000 square foot, which was approved in '09, down to 169 roughly. And there's also some other small changes that have to do with the little small modular buildings that serve some of the existing improvements on the site, and we'll talk about that as we move through. The site is basically on Old 41 in the county line on the southern end, on the northern end, I mean, and on a buddy Lee County and budding the railroad. There's a larger picture of the site. Currently, on the site is a couple of large towers. These are communication towers that serve emergency services and some radio, television, and other users. Been there for many years. The site also has a small building on it, which is being leased for office, for a contractor's storage office. And I'll kind of fast-forward just so you can kind of see. There's this existing building here, and it actually goes over into here. And there's a roofing company, which is leasing that space now and operating with some of their trucks and equipment that are in the yard that are currently there. And a lot of the small details in the amendment really revolve around the operation of that facility. So, this is kind of a rendering of what the finished product will look like. The project is to be developed into two phases. And as you could see, I'm sorry. As you could see, this is the county line there, and this is a railroad that... And then there's another parcel of land, and then there's Old 41. So, the project is very well buffered from the highway. It's buffered over on this side by the Meditera Golf Course. So, it's kind of in a little enclave that's kind of unique to itself and abutting this self-storage facility to the south. A couple of things to note. This is that partial of the original building that's going to remain. This is what is called Building Number Two, but it's Phase One. And then this is Building Number One, which we built, which will be built in Phase Two. This building here will have the relocation of these offices that are being removed will be moved into this building, and then there'll be self-storage in that building. And then in the future, this will be a self-storage building. This is an indigenous preserve that we've preserved on the end of the property, on the nose of it, which then again further buffers the site from neighboring properties. I did want to show the views, you know, the two residential areas that are close by. This is what you would see. These are pictures taken from those neighboring areas. This is a view from Meditera across the golf course. And we just kind of drew the line about where the top of those buildings will be so you can kind of see, you know, what that view would be from across the golf course. This is one from in Cordova. The same thing, if you, you know, just look at the height of the towers, it's about right here on the tower where the 50 feet falls. So, that line would be across here somewhere. So, there's the two existing views without the building. This is a rendering we did from Old 41 of what the buildings would look like with the proposed buffering. Now, in this view, we ignored those existing trees you saw in the last slide. We don't show them on this in order to show you what if there was nothing in the right of way of the railroad or the highway, if there were no trees, this is what our buffer would look like from the highway. This is the wall that we proposed that's eight feet high. This is the trees and shrubs that we proposed to build. This is what it would look like after about five years of growth. This is what it would look like after about 10 years of growth. So, there were a number of deviations. The top three were approved back in '09, and the bottom four we're adding now. And most of these have to do with what's already there or rules that have changed since the original approval in '09. Really, it doesn't have anything to do with the proposed project. We intend to use the existing lake that's on the site for stormwater, and the slopes are steeper than 401, which is required in the code, which is why we're asking for this deviation. Again, all of this really refers to what's currently existing and just memorializing that. The one new deviation is we're asking to connect to sewer in Phase Two of the project. The code says if you have more than 30,000 square feet of building that you have to hook to sewer. However, these are large, pretty much empty buildings. They're a storage facilities. And the most of the sewer flow from Phase One is the actual user that's currently there. So, we're just relocating them into the new building. And we already had pulled permits from the Health Department for that first building, and we can accommodate a septic tank for that building. And like I said, most of the flow that would be in that septic tank would be from the current user that's on the site, not from the proposed storage that will be in that first building. The cost is exorbitant to put in a pump station and pump down the railroad, along the railroad right of way, all the way up to the Meditera and connect to the sewer there. And we don't mind doing that. We just like to defer that until the second phase. We did add a condition there that in case something different happened in that first phase, that we would go ahead and limit the drain bed for that first building to 1,600 square feet, which is pretty small, slightly larger than the one we have now, so that, you know, we didn't then put a bigger... Another user in that building that then used a whole bunch of sewer in that first phase. That keeps us from doing that. We have no intentions of doing that. We really just want to move our current person who's leasing into that building and then just use the rest of it for storage. This is the master site plan, which is the more detailed version of the rendering you saw earlier. Point out here, this is the indigenous preserve. We are proposing... This is that wall you saw in the rendering. And the idea there is there's some roll-up doors here in this building, and we wanted to try to buffer the view of any roll-up doors, which currently with the vegetation that's there now, you wouldn't see them anyway. But this requirement has us putting a wall in those trees and shrubs that you saw here so it would protect the view there from those doors. The... As mentioned before, the connection to the sewer, we would have to go all the way down to here and come and cross up underneath Meditera's entrance road to a connection over here. And although it's really close to our property line, it's really far from where our buildings are. And so, it's quite an expense to do that, and that's why we'd ask to defer that to the second phase. This is... I did this exhibit just to kind of show what it's going to look like after that first building is built. So, we're removing this building here where the roofing company operates. They'll move into this building, and then that will be storage. This will be the parking and air for the storage. And then there will be this area here where there'll be some outside storage, similar to what they're doing now on that site, and then some extra. This is the temporary location for the temporary septic drain field, and then that would go away. That's right underneath the building footprint of the second building, so it'll go away in Phase Two.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Sure.
Explain the sewer system. The 1,600-something or other...
Yeah, so 1,600 square-
Where'd that go to?
Yeah, so that's-
Field or?
That's the size of this drain field. So what we're saying is, we're not going to, we're not going to put a user in Phase One that needs more sewer than this drain field will accommodate. We're not going to go out, we're not going to go back and ask for a larger drain field for more sewage flow. We're going to limit it to 1,600 feet, so, square feet. And that's just the area of the drain field itself. What'll happen is, we'll have a pumping system out of the building, and that will pump the effluent into this drain field, which will be here. It'll be a temporary drain field, and the maximum size will be 1,600 feet.
And you're waiting to hook up later on?
Right. When we build, when we build a second building, it'll be right where this temporary drain field is, so it goes away and we connect to the sewer. We'll put in a pump station and several hundred feet of force main, which would connect us over here.
Well, I understand it's expensive, but we're also, everybody's worried about septic systems.
Correct. There's a septic system there now, and the majority of that flow comes from the roofing company that's there. And after we build this building, that'll still be the case. The majority of the flow in this drain field will just be from the user that's there. So we're not, we're not really adding much to it. The storage building has just a handful of bathrooms for the storage, and people don't really stay at storage facilities. They come and drop their stuff when they go.
These towers are existing, is that true?
Towers are existing. That's correct.
And you haven't had much conversation with Meditera since they're so far away with the residents?
We didn't meet with Meditera. We had a community meeting. They had a lot of questions, but they're, you know, for the most part, we're reducing that building from five stories to three, so it's better for them.
Yes, yes.
That's better for them. So really, that's the main change. Everything else is pretty similar to what they saw before in '09.
How much left do you have in your side of the presentation? Because I have a number of things I'd like to talk about in regards to the septic side of this.
Okay, almost finished.
Great, thanks.
So I wanted to talk about this. There were, there was a long list of uses that were allowed under the previous approval in '09, and staff had asked us to look at these uses, and they pointed out a number of them that they thought were no longer appropriate. And we looked at the list with them. We've worked back and forth with the staff, and we finally agreed that these uses, which were previously approved on the site, we're willing to forego those in the future. So those will no longer be allowed uses on the property. And so that was another thing with the sewer. You know, we're only allowed a handful of uses now, and none of them really use a whole bunch of sewer. So any of these other uses, which are more like retail operations, those would use way more sewer than the current proposal. So as a part of this process, the applicant has agreed to give up these, which are currently approved, he could go out and do these today. And he's agreed that we'd go ahead and forego these moving forward on this amendment. So I think that's a real important factor for the whole thing, is, you know, we're reducing the height of the building. We're giving up, oh, it's about 15 uses there, and the really only thing we're asking for is defer sewer to the second phase. And it's not that we're not going to do it. When that second big building gets built, that's where we're going to put it in. So in short, the modification reduces the overall intensity of the project. We talked about the square footage is being decreased. The impact of the project is less because the five-story building is now moving down to four. You know, we're not adversely impacting any environmental areas. We're going to be served by services. By the time Phase Two is built, we'll be connected to all the central services. And with the conditions, we have appropriate setbacks, appropriate buffering, and we feel like this is a good project for the city. I think this overall proposal is much better for the city than what was previously approved and what's currently active in the '09 approval. And therefore, we would ask that you approve staff's recommendation. We do agree with all the conditions. We've worked with staff. I want to thank staff for working with us for many, many, many months on all of these conditions, and we do agree with the staff's recommendation and the conditions. I'm free for any questions now or later.
Sure, I've got a few.
I'll call on you, hang on. What is the projected timeline on this?
The first building would be as soon as we get permits. So as soon as we get permits, we're going to build the first building. So that will be started within months. The second building, basically, when the first building, you know, gets fairly leased up, then you go to the second building.
So permitting is, you're ready to go except for the permitting?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's those people behind you there.
Yes.
Okay. I'm satisfied.
Okay. Mr. May.
Yes, Jesse.
Okay. So here's my issue with the project. Obviously, this predated me arriving on council. I do remember the project in '09. I didn't love it because honestly, I don't love storage at that part in the middle of Benita, honestly. But it is what it is. You guys are within your entitlements. You've gone down on the height. I appreciate all of those things. Eight of the nine deviations I'm okay with. The septic to sewer postponement, I'm not. But, and the reason why is because I don't like the precedent. I understand it's 250, 300,000, I get it. To me, it is the precedent of continuing the usage of septic. I mean, I don't think there's any scientific argument that septic is detrimental to water quality. We just spent $1.2 million on the second phase of the bioreactor, which is right by the Imperial. So essentially with this, we're getting asked to look the other way on septic, right by the Imperial, where we just spent all this other money, until you get to the second phase. And I understand that the second phase will get taken care of, but septic is something that we're trying to slowly do away with. I believe by doing this, as you're asking, we are encouraging septic at a very crucial place geographically to the water, which worries me, and I think it's in direct conflict with the money we just spent on the bioreactor. So I'm okay with the project. I'm okay with eight of your nine deviations, but I don't think it's a good precedent for us to set to not enforce the 30,000 square foot plus having to hook up to city. So I appreciate, like, you guys did a lot of work in it. I went over it. I appreciate, I understand the height, all that stuff is big asks, and this is, this is nothing against the project. It's just simply, this is going to be, this sets the precedent that it would be okay or it would not be okay to do that. And in my opinion, we just, we need to set the tone that we don't encourage septic with new development. People hook up to city water. When they can afford to hook up to city water, they can move forward. If they can't, then that's just kind of where it needs to end.
Let me just respond to that. You know, we do, we do a lot of these deviations, and one of the things that you look at with a deviation is how do we approve a deviation without setting a precedent? And I think if you look in the code, there's the square footage requirement, but there's also the gallon requirement of 5,000, okay? We're going to be way under that. We're less than 1,000. So we're 20% of that. And the way that you could look at this, that it's not really setting a precedent, is this really is a unique project. It's not like every other project. There's almost no other type of development that you could build that would have this many square feet and have that low of a sewer flow. It's a very, very low sewer flow. And so the idea of the precedent is, well, every other project that comes down the pike is not going to be 20% of the flow that's required in your ordinance and be that large. And so it's only because the buildings are large that you're asking, that we're asking for deviation, not because of the sewer flow itself. And they've previously had already pulled the permit to build this septic system. We're going to have to modify it because we're moving it to a different spot, but the Health Department's already looked at it, reviewed it. Literally, this septic field that we're building is about the size it would be for two or three homes. So we're not asking, you know, we just don't generate that much sewer, and we do think we're a special circumstance that wouldn't necessarily make this a precedent, because we do have special circumstances. We have extremely large buildings, which produce very little sewer. So that's kind of the way we look at deviations always. How can we, you know, how can you do it without setting a precedent? Well, you have to have special circumstances, and we think we have special circumstances that don't apply to every, the next project that comes by, you know, most likely.
I hear you. That unfortunately goes both ways, though, too. So you're, the special circumstance that's 10 to 20%, I get, but the special circumstance that you're in close proximity to putting a septic field by the Imperial is also a special circumstance. So that, to me, outweighs the other side of it, because I have to look at, if I, from your shoes, I understand that you have to ask the question.
Right.
Of course you do. It's your job. I get it. From my shoes, I can't approve a septic field right by the Imperial. I just can't do it, and I'm sorry. I appreciate all the work you guys have put in. I really do. I thoroughly get into this stuff. Septic by the Imperial, for me, is going to be a no. But you can hear it from everybody else, obviously.
Sure.
That's just where I'm at. Thank you.
Yes, Amy.
I have a couple of questions, and-
Well, is staff going to make a presentation?
Well, if her questions are directed to the applicant, then this would be the appropriate time to do it.
Maybe the staff could answer my questions, but let me tell you now, and if you want the staff to answer, it's fine with me. The deviation for the pond, where it goes from 4 to 1 to 2 to 1, and that's the slope, I just don't understand conceptually, you know, that just means it's deeper along the sides, right?
Yeah, the banks are steeper, and really, it's right here on this map. If you look, there's an area right in here. This pond is existing. It's not a postponed. It's been there for years, and the slopes are steeper than code. So the only reason we're asked for that deviation, we're going to actually go in and put in some hardening on these slopes to make sure they don't erode. They've been there for years, and they haven't eroded, so we don't have any reason to believe they would. But staff says if we're going to recommend that you can do, can leave these steeper slopes there, you've got to go harden them. So we're going to come in with a GeoWeb fabric that we're going to put on those banks just to make sure they don't erode. That's the reason that's in the code, is to prevent erosion, and rather than go in there and try to rebuild the lake, we're going to just harden those slopes in that area.
Well, you answered my, I mean, you compensated for the deviation by-
Correct.
Putting in infrastructure.
Correct.
Now, my second question is just kind of conceptual, and how close is your, is the property line to the railroad right of way?
So our property line is the railroad right-of-way line. So this is our property line right here, and that is, that is the railroad property line.
Okay, I mean, I just, you know, we're interested in the sun trail, and when we, you know, in our aspiration thinks we might have some kind of a multi-use path along the railroad. And I know you mentioned that in Phase Two, when you put in the sewer pipe, that you were going to go along the railroad. So all I, I'm just asking you and the staff to just be aware that we want to protect any possibility of not running into trouble if we can, you know, somehow get the sun trail going down there. So that's, that's my only concern there. And otherwise, I, you know, I understand Jesse's concern about the sewer, the septic system there, but I agree with the flow reasoning there, so. And the rest of the project, I'm very happy with. I like a lot of things that you did to make it more appropriate, impactfully, and even beautificationally along that road, because, you know, right down there, we have some issues, I think, for the, for Old 41, the extension of Old 41. So I'm pleased with the project. I'm going to vote in favor. Thank you.
I echo Amy. Laura speaking. And it makes sense in terms of weighting, because you've taken a hit and lowering, and so in the second phase, you'll have more money, and then you can put in this, and nobody's using it. People don't go to a storage facility to use a bathroom. Well, at least, I would hope not. Nobody's looking now. So, yeah, no, I'm definitely, I've been there. I live across the street, so I love how you're going to make it prettier.
Thank you.
Yes, you have potable water coming to you?
We have to-
Well, water.
No, we have to extend water line even farther to connect over at Constitution Plaza, and we're going to do that with Phase One.
Okay. Any other questions? Fred?
What timeframe will it be before you get to the second phase, when you get rid of the septic tank?
Yeah, and that's the question we've gotten a lot, and there's not really a good feel for the timing. Tim, I don't know if you want to try to address that?
Sure. My name is Tim Sheehan for the record.
Mr. Sheehan, please come up on the record.
For the record, my name is Tim Sheehan. I'm the owner of the property, purchased the property, well, been operating on the property since 1993 and purchased it in somewhere late 90s.
Will you speak up, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Timothy Sheehan for the record. I'm the property owner, and I've owned, leased the property from Baron Collar Company back in 93, and purchased the property from Baron Collar Company in 99 or so. And I forgot what the question was. Oh, timing of Phase Two, sorry. Thank you for letting us present today also. Timing of Phase Two, we would like to be able to build it as soon as possible, but just, it's a fairly large-scale project to begin with, and we will move forward as soon as it seems economically viable that building one is working out.
Do you think you would have it five years would be?
I think that would be very reasonable, optimistic.
Well, what I'd like to propose, at least for your consideration, which kind of splits the position that we can leave the septic tanks go, and those that want it now, would you be willing to agree to put to some date that if you haven't built Phase Two, like in five years, you would at least do the part to get the sewer straightened out and not have a septic tank?
I'd like to think about it a little bit, but I would like to address, I think, was it Jesse?
Yes, sir.
His concern about septic. There is a septic field functioning on the property and has been for many, many years. It's up in the, I guess it'd be the southwest corner as you come into the property, and because of the construction in that area, we figured it would be better to build a brand-new field, which is more effective with aeration and all that kind of stuff to process the water, the wastewater. So while we are expanding it a little bit, only to be cautious, we're not really adding any kind of significant flow, because there's no net new users on the property. It's only the roofing company.
So why the expansion, then? Like, if you could keep it exactly as it is, and then you could come up with a time when you would agree that you would go to the city, that would be more palatable. My issue is expansion of septic by the Imperial. That's my issue.
Sure, okay. I think in working with Jackie and her team, we thought it was more appropriate, and we will be adding possibly four bathrooms. I don't want to say net, because we're going to be removing two bathrooms from the existing building that's going to be torn down and replacing them for Kelly Roofing. And recall, I mean, there's no residential here. There's no shower, there's no kitchen sink, there's no anything. So there's literally just bathrooms. And probably in the storage facility, there'll be a male and female bathroom on one of the upper floors, so that's the net add. We just figured we'd add a little bit more capacity so that it would, if there was any condition, and it would just help the whole system function better, and having a brand-new system versus one that's about 10 to 12 years old. And we're building it, where we're building, it's going to, I won't say be in the way, but it's going to be subject to possibly being damaged. So that's why we thought it was better for everybody to relocate it.
Well, and I hear you on that. My only, okay, so if it's 10 to 20% of the traditional flow in that area, I don't really see a reason why we have to expand. And the, I mean, the thought that, hey, it's already old, so we'll get new. If we're getting rid of it in five years, it doesn't matter. So again, if you could operate under what you currently have and give us a time when you think you can connect to the city per zoning, I would be pleased with that, because everything else you've done is stellar. I appreciate everything else you've done in the projects. It's, to me, it's a sticking point about expanding the septic field by the Imperial.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate and respect your position. I think it's, and I think it may be more guided by we're possibly setting a precedent, which I really don't think we are, because we're basically moving a small septic field, building a slightly, I mean, slightly larger one on another piece of the property. The benefit is that there's, it's a more productive septic field. We're getting it out of the way of construction. We wouldn't be likely to damage it during construction, et cetera. So there's an additional cost for us to move it and relocate it and expand it slightly, but I don't think the flow that, or the impact, environmental impact that we're causing is in any way significant.
Right, okay, so the environment-
Can I have a floor?
Sure.
Jesse?
I'm sorry?
Can I have?
Of course, go ahead.
Have you figured out what the impact fees are going to be?
They're pretty significant, I think.
They're going to be significant.
Yeah, over a couple, maybe a quarter million dollars, I think, was the last calculation I saw.
Because the city does benefit from your project financially.
Certainly, I don't, you know-
And it seems like you've bent over backwards with lowering the height of the building, and I can understand not having it on your sewer line with such limited number of people working there.
And we did contribute-
Is there any chance of putting- Is there any chance of putting a timeline on building one, Phase One?
I'm not trying to be evasive with the answer. It's kind of really economic. If we, if we were successful in Phase One, you know, building the building, and it filled up rapidly, I would, I mean, there's all the economic incentive in the world for me to want to build Building Two, you know, with the approval that we-
You're a businessman, and you've got to-
Sure.
You've got to pay the bills, right?
Yeah. I mean-
The question that happens here very often is people make a proposal, and they get it approved, and it doesn't get built for four or five years. And it just doesn't seem right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the downside to the city is that there's a septic field there, and if we were, you know-
Do you think the city should put a time limit on your billing, or no?
I don't-
Does this go on forever?
Seven years? Is that fair? I mean, I-
You don't know the future.
Yeah, I don't know the future. I mean, you know, we just had a crazy presidential election, we had all kinds of different things that have happened, and who knows, the economy, one day to the next. I think that there's a great future potential, and I have all the incentive, I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars engineering and working with the city to put this all together, and there's all the economics in the world for me here.
Have you had any contact with Collier County on this? Is that out of the realm of?
Well, we work with City Benita-
You're bordering Collier County, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we're right on the border.
They're not involved at all?
No, I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so.
Because I think the, our flow from the site goes to the Imperial River Basin, is the engineering flow.
Well, I'm satisfied. I'd like to call for a vote.
Mayor, may we have the presentation from the staff, please?
Yes.
Mayor, may we have the presentation from our staff?
I hope I answered your question, sir. I mean, it's-
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jacqueline Gensen for the record. My presentation is actually going to be extremely brief, because I did coordinate with the applicant's presentation, so I didn't duplicate efforts. So, as part of this review team, the individuals listed above were review entities, sorry, on this application request. So, I do have Tricia Goff here, Laura Gibson, and they're physically here today. Otherwise, all of the analysis is contained in the staff report. Collier County, the application was distributed to them for their review. They were very interested in the transportation impacts. Unfortunately, what they would like to include is not necessarily within their jurisdiction, but we still will coordinate with them when the site permit comes in. In terms of overall the case, the recommendation staff did go ahead and recommend approval with conditions. As part of my testimony, I would like to enter our staff report and all attachments into the record. In regards to the changes of the conditions, you will see changes to the schedule of uses. You'll see them in strike through and underline. The areas in yellow indicate uses that we worked on reestablishing in terms of changing our position from the staff report. The site development regulations changed based on a setback and also the height, and of course, we have the sanitary sewer change in that condition. There are new conditions about architectural standards. Sam Vincent, our city architect, did review this at the zoning level. We typically don't do that until the site permit comes in, but the applicant did have some elevations that he did provide some feedback on. And based on some of his observations, you will see conditions in there. It's a condition five. You'll see some architectural conditions relative to that item. Also put a condition in there on signage, because we are talking about four-story buildings, we are adjacent to residential developments, so we wanted to go ahead and limit any elimination and impacts to those neighborhoods. You will also see some additional regulations, or sorry, conditions on environmental engineering and bicycle pedestrian conditions. In terms of public comment, the applicant was very proactive in their public participation. Meditera's always been something we've had them coordinate with, so even before they filed, they went ahead and met with Meditera. They also had a post-sufficiency neighborhood meeting. This application was filed before we adopted the neighborhood regulations, so they weren't required to have the pre-filing meeting, but they did have a post-neighborhood, sorry, a post-sufficiency neighborhood meeting where representatives of both Cordova and Meditera were present, and that information's in the staff report. We also sent out courtesy notices. I only received one response back, and it was positive in terms of supporting the project, and that is the property owner to the west, adjacent to the railroad right-of-way. In terms of zoning board, there was a recommendation of seven to zero to approve the project. They were very complimentary of the petition and the presentations. Mainly, their direction in terms of also supporting the recommendation was for the applicant and staff to work together on reevaluating some of the uses we recommended to remove. So, we went ahead and did that. You'll see that again in the yellow highlight. We also worked with the applicant on screening condition, also the Benita Springs utility language in terms of coordinating with them on replanting the preserve areas, and also the location of guy wires. So, that was the direction by the zoning board, and we have notated those changes. They are in yellow. Post zoning board, I did have a discussion with one of the zoning board members after the hearing. There was some concern about the deviation justification not necessarily incorporated into the condition, so we went ahead, worked with the applicant, and you'll see new language also added to that condition. That's condition four. In terms of entitlement history, just to give you some background, the site did originally have a special exception approved for a garden nursery. In 2008, they had a land use map amendment from moderate-density residential, which is the same category as Meditera and Cordova. They had an approval to change it to industrial, again, just because of the character of the site and the uses that were transpiring there. In 2009, the CPD was originally approved for the cell tower replacement and the self-storage uses, and other office light industrial-like uses. And then we processed some administrative amendments to go ahead and help with the replacement of those towers, and also a connection to potable water. The 2009 zoning ordinance did allow for them to modify and impact their preserve if they were bringing in potable water, so they have gone ahead and done that, and that is incorporated in the project, and that potable water is coming on through their property, so not the railroad right-of-way. We also have reviewed and approved several site permits, so you'll see there's three site permits that we've also reviewed. I don't know why I'm ringing. In terms of just getting some facts onto the record with the location map of the project, I know Mr. Rogers went over that, but this is the future land use map designation of industrial, and it is CPD, and he already extensively explained the uses that are transpiring on the property today. In terms of deviations, he did go over those as well. Staff had no objections to those deviations. We did recommend approval, with the exception of obtaining guidance and recommendation from the city council on the sanitary sewer. So, that's deviation four, and I know we've discussed that in detail, but how we went ahead and discussed this in the staff report is, in 2009, this is the original condition that the city council had approved to address this issue. When the application came back in, I thought it was more appropriate to go ahead and process the deviation to address this concern, and that's why you see the language in front of you today. And then the yellow language is additional language that the applicant has agreed to as a result of the concern by one of the zoning board members. So, again, in 2009, city council did allow them to connect at 32,000 square feet capacity of the drain bed. In this instance, we're getting a guarantee of connecting with Phase Two, Building One, and then in no instance about the drain field exceeding 1,600 square feet capacity. Again, I had requested in my staff report that this ultimately is council's decision. We need direction from the council on this, because it was a strategic priority in 2019. So, that's how we are looking for your guidance on that condition, deviation.
Can I interrupt you? Can you explain what 1,600 square feet is?
I will let Mr. Rogers do that.
So, in the previous approval in '09, as you can see, there was a 3,200 square-foot maximum capacity of the drain field, and we've cut that in half to 1,600, because we know our building will be under 1,600. This is the size of the drain field, 1,600 square feet. That would be the max-
1,600 square foot of drain field.
Correct, drain field. That's the size of the drain field. So, previously, the condition said we could go up to 3,200 before we connected. We're cutting that in half to 1,600, because our first building is less than that.
So, in terms of the finding for our recommendation, and also the zoning board recommendation, and as well as your recommendation, we have found the project consistent with all of the findings as required by the Land Development Code, which are also contained in the staff report on pages 52. And we are here to answer any questions.
Ms. Gensen, just briefly, just as an edification for the board, are there still any differences between the staff recommendations and the applicant's petition following the zoning board? Are those just the highlighted areas?
We are currently all in agreement.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Okay, at this time, I recommend the mayor open it up to public comment.
I have some questions first. I just want to help ask two questions of Jackie. The first one is, I know that we have some kind of sunset provision on development orders. I assume that it wouldn't hold here, because we also have, like, if they build 25 percent or something, is that why it doesn't, it doesn't hold here?
Well, not necessarily. So, what the LDC says is there's a duration of rights for the master concept plan, so that clock is five years unless a applicant obtains, or I think it's actually submits, a development order to obtain 20 percent of the intensity, density, or essentially an equivalent thereof, so maybe it's infrastructure that they went ahead and put in, a preserve management plan, bringing in water and sewer, their buffers. So, it's, it depends on each project and where they're at in that site development process.
So, it's likely if they do building, the first building, is that Building Two, that they will meet that 25 percent?
That is, I would agree with that.
So, if we wanted to put some kind of time limit on it, it would have to be a special condition for this. Is that how you would do it?
If you're looking for the connection to sanitary sewer, you can do that. That is council's pleasure.
Okay. And then I do have a question specifically about sanitary sewer. The design of that is governed by the Department of Health or something?
Correct. They're their main permitting agency.
Okay. And is my understanding that septic fields are different than the way they used to be, maybe not 10 years ago? So, is there any way we could put any special provisions on it to make sure that it doesn't leak into the Imperial River? I don't even know if the Imperial River watershed is connected there, so I mean, but is there anything we could do about that?
Unfortunately, I do not have that knowledge for you. Maybe Mr. Rogers might, and our building official, he's usually pretty up to speed on standards for Department of Health, but I can't answer that question.
Maybe if we have our environmental person here, he could just comment about how much of a risk is that, given the suggested flow?
I'm sorry, if you could repeat the question, I was-
Well, I just wondered if we have any comment in regard to the risk of contaminating or causing problems on the Imperial River. I mean, and also if we could put special conditions about containment of some sort. I don't know. I don't know anything about septic fields. I'm not an engineer.
Like you, this quickly gets out of my area of expertise, so I'm not going to get into too much detail, but I think that we can address a lot of the concerns with some simple conditions, such as a required annual inspection, or looking along the lines of a better design in terms of current septic tanks. I know that, like you had hinted at earlier, septic tanks today are more efficient and less environmentally damaging than they used to be 15, 20 years ago, not to say that they're the preferred alternative, but they are better than they were. So, if we're able to take a look on that site once a year, I think we can make sure that there's not a lot of damage, and that it's still functioning the way that it should.
So, we could just put that in as a condition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And you could, I know that you had talked earlier about timing the required connection. You can do that one of two ways. You could look at that from a duration of time, obviously, for a period of years, months, whatever you choose, or you could also look at a milestone. At a certain point of development, at that point, it would trigger the connection, which provides you-
That's basically what they have. When they put in the, when they put in the second building, that's the only thing they're going to do. They're not going to-
Correct, but there's no guarantee that the second building will be built.
Right, I see.
We've called for a vote. It's been seconded. Any other questions?
You had public comment yet today.
Yeah, we-
Public comment on this? Anybody from Meditera or anywhere else that might have a comment on this?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, seeing no public comment, I will, pursuant to state law, I will read the ordinance title, and then you can move to final debate and vote. A zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs amending the existing zoning for the Channel 30 commercial plan development, amending the height and number of stories, increase the square footage of the modular communication buildings, and removal of the caretakers' quarters, amending the master concept plan, and amending the schedule of deviations on 6.11 plus or minus acres along the north of the Collier County line, east of the Seminole Gulf Railway, and west of Meditera Residential Gulf Course, and providing for an effective date.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Carr?
I was going to make an amendment.
Just a minute. Is it, I would like to put in that recommendation from John to have an annual inspection. At what point in the deliberation should we do that?
And I also have an amendment as well, so.
Okay. So, at this point, there's a motion and a second. If someone would like to move to make an amendment, we would vote on that amendment first, and then go on the primary motion.
I'd like to move to make, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like, I don't mind, I went first. I make the amendment that we include in it a provision that there's an annual inspection on the septic field as defined in the project.
Second.
Well, since I made the first motion, I'll amend my motion to accept what Amy said.
I'm on my second.
Then we can vote on it.
Yeah, we can vote on one vote.
Thank you.
Any further debate?
Ready to vote now?
No.
Y'all happy? Let's go.
I have an amendment.
One more second. Apparently, there's another amendment.
Well, this one needs to go separate, because I don't know if it's going to pass, so I don't want to tie it to yours.
Yeah, let's do this.
I don't want to tie it to yours, because yours is very good, and I don't want to screw it up. I would like to tie two years for them to tie, hook up to city water.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. That's a motion, accepting it exactly as is with her amendment, with two years for them to actually hook up to city water.
Well, again, I made the amendment. I have amended Amy's, and it's been seconded by Chris. Can we vote?
Well, no, there's, as it stands, there is currently a motion to approve the rezoning request with an amendment, with an additional condition adding annual inspections to the septic system. There is also a motion, there has now been seconded, on the floor to make a further amendment to that motion, to add a two-year limitation on the septic system, at which point it must connect into the BSU system.
I would agree to a seven year. Within seven, or when the second building is built?
I can be amenable to, could be five?
Can we just vote on Amy's amendment? And make this, except for this guy?
I think five, if Jesse will agree, we can, five?
I'll go to five, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Look at, see?
Well, okay, okay, wait a minute. Fred, did you second the original motion?
My original motion has now been amended to Amy and Jesse, so-
Is the original seconder agreed to that amendment?
Annual checkup of septic, five year.
This is getting out of hand.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Are we going to vote? Are we going to sit here and talk all day long? Are you in favor or are you against the project, period? Okay, can we have a vote? A or N? That's it. No more talking?
Excuse me. We have to clarify the second amendment.
No more? We have a call for a vote?
I want to vote on my, on the original thing, but there is another amendment on the floor, so we either have to vote that down. I think that's the procedure, unfortunately. So, let's vote on-
I can't hear you, and I don't want to listen to you.
Excuse me. Point of privilege.
Call for a vote?
Excuse me, Derek.
Call for a question? Is that the word I'm going to?
Excuse me.
All, a call for a question only ends debate. At the moment, if we were to vote on the initial motion, the previous question, that would approve the project and would foreclose further amendments. So, if there are additional amendments on the floor, they would have to be seconded So if there are additional amendments on the floor, they would have to be seconded and voted on in order to move forward on the original previous question. I have not, since there has not been an acceptance of the second amendment by the original proposer and the original second, we would have to vote on it separately unless Councilmember Corey agrees to add that condition of five years.
I do not agree. I want to vote on the...
And I do not agree either on the original.
So we, but we do have a second from... So we do have a motion from Councilwoman Purdon, and I believe a second from Councilmember Forbes to, for the amendment on five, to add five years. We can take a vote on that, and when that's been dispensed, we move on the previous question. Please.
Vote.
Councilwoman Carr?
For five years, yes.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilwoman Corey?
No.
Councilwoman Gibson?
No.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caramba?
No.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Yes.
Okay. It fails, so now you are free to move on the original motion. If there's no more debate, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilwoman Corey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
The rezoning passes five-two.
Almost painless, right?
Okay, you are now moving on to your consent agenda, just as a, unless you would like to take a recess.
You said like a five-minute recess?
Yes. Yes, that's on the agenda. Please do. Back in twenty-five minutes.
If I could, thank you.
Thank you for being patient with us.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, your next items are the consent agenda, which unless you or any of the council members wish to pull any specific item, you can move and adopt in a single motion. You also have restraint in the ability to discuss the items afterwards after the vote has been made if you have any specific comments.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other questions? Call for a vote.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and are there any comments from any city council members on those agenda items?
I just had, with respect to the contract with the engineering company over the Spring Creek, Benita Springs Golf Course Flood Improvement Project, I noted that that was listed as Phase One. How many, Matt, how many phases are there? And is this, is this series of contracts what gets us to the August date where we're hoping to submit something to FEMA?
Yes, so this is, it would be a two-phase contract. This is the first phase of it, which would get you the cost-benefit analysis as well as three design concepts. So you need the design concept to understand whether you have a cost-beneficial project in the eyes of FEMA, right?
Right.
Because that's a stepping stone. So this would get you to that so that you have a viable project to represent to FEMA to unlock the rest of the money.
Okay.
The final piece would be final design of whichever of the three concepts council selected.
And then when could we expect final deliverables on Phase One? Would that be in the spring sometime or early summer?
Probably in the early summer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Corey, you have no additional comments on the consent item. Your next items are proclamations and presentations, the first of which is an update from Capital Strategies on the legislative session. Carol Green is here to speak on that.
And Ashley.
And Ashley.
And Mayor and Council, for your reference, we provided last year's legislative priorities for you to begin the discussion. Included as well on the second page are the funding requests that we had prior year.
Good morning.
Morning.
Carol Green, Capital Strategies. Ashley Stasiel, Capital Strategies. We're here to share with you a few remarks and then to discuss the legislative priorities, which obviously is time to get those all set so that we can move forward. Yesterday, they did have swearing-in and organizational session in Tallahassee. We were not there. Traditionally, we would be there. Traditionally, as a former member, I am allowed access to the floor, which I always enjoy. And unfortunately, because of the pandemic and the situation we're living in now, no one was allowed on the floor except the elected members, the currently elected members. So we were not there to be able to participate in that. Along with that, I would tell you that they have not, they have decided not to have any committee meetings in December, which normally we would have because of the election year. They normally meet December, January, and February, leading up to the March 2nd start of session. But because of the fact that they're still trying to deal with the logistics of the pandemic, logistics meaning the fact, for those of you who've been in the Capitol will understand, we have limited elevators and a lot of members that are on, in the tower, and consequently, it's very hard to get to them. So the social distancing is a very complex issue there in the Capitol. So right now, they are going to take most of December to determine how they are going to deal with the logistics. We will start committee meetings on January 11th. What that really means to each and every one of us here at the city is that we need to really focus on our local boots-on-the-ground game here, it's not a game, of course, but here in Lee County, by meeting with, especially with our newly-elected members of the House. We have Kathleen Pasadena was still the Senator for the City of Benita Springs. She's very familiar with our city, as you all know, and we thank her very much for all of the support she has given us, especially in the last year with the amount of monies that she was able to help us with. We do have a newly-elected representative. Many of you know him already. We will get to know him even better. He's going to be City of Benita Springs' new best friend, and we are going to have an opportunity to sit down and share this. Obviously, until we get a decision from the mayor and from the city council, we don't have the legislative priorities to take. So as soon as we have that, we will set meetings and start, and start doing that to make sure that they know, he knows, they know. That brings up the point of the local delegation.
Amy, excuse, you're talking about Byron Donalds?
Excuse?
Oh, Congressman?
Are you talking about Adam?
I'm talking about, okay.
Yeah, let's just like, I'll give Adam.
Councilwoman Carr, it's a give-and-take here, but recall that in order for any member to interrupt and ask questions, please seek the recognition of the chair.
And I will tell you that the delegation is meeting in follow-up to that. Even though we certainly want to interact with our local elected representative and senator, we will also want to make sure that we interact with all of the local delegation. It's very important, because when they are in Tallahassee, they truly do work together to make sure that they're representing our community. So consequently, there is a delegation hearing that will be held, that's tradition, that will be held on December 16th, I think, anyway. I know I've sent the paperwork over to Arlene.
December 16th.
Yes, 16th, with the deadline of December 7th being the date that we need to have everything put together and into their packets. And I will be working closely with Arlene to make sure that we make all of that happen and make sure that you are represented on the agenda for that day so that we can actually do a presentation to the delegation, which will then put on record the asks that we have or the concerns that we have for this upcoming legislative session. That won't be the only meeting, however. We will also do one-on-ones, especially with our local folks, just to make sure that they know what we're looking for. What I can tell you is that, that the budget projections are very bleak in Tallahassee. They are throwing out numbers like $3 billion. I don't really understand billions, but $3 billion that we have as a deficit. And all of the agencies have already been instructed to slice off 8.5% of their budgets that they're putting out. So we could see the possibility that there will even be some budget changes between now and the end of June, which would be the budget that we're currently operating under, not even talking about the budget that we're going into. So we have to take that into consideration about what's, what is going to be happening there. I will also tell you that even though there's a lot of reporting that's going on in regards to the speeches that were given yesterday and the comments that were made yesterday about COVID, the lack of the comments about COVID, I should say, because most of the media's reporting that there wasn't really a lot of time spent talking about COVID specifically, that COVID looms very large over the legislature this year, and that we will actually see that every decision that's made, be it policy or budget, will probably take that into account because we do have to make up the shortfall. So I think that those are things that we all need to understand about that. The best advice most everybody was giving these days is just write everything down in pencil, because we may have to erase it and change it a little bit. So we are going to have to have some flexibility as we go forward. That being said, actually, am I forgetting anything? Okay, good thing I had notes. So obviously, the news that we're hearing is very hopeful for all of us in regards to vaccine, and that could really change things dramatically, but I don't see that changing things dramatically, I personally don't see it changing things dramatically for this incoming session. So I think we're going to be under that, under that umbrella right now of having to make those hard decisions. You do have in front of you the legislative priorities that we had that were accepted last year, and we need to discuss that. Arlene, I'll let you take that and go with it.
Thank you, Carol. We wanted to present, these have actually been, the first basic talking points have actually been your legislative priorities the last couple of years. We wanted to seek some direction from council as to whether you'd like some of the adjustments to these or any prioritization. Additionally, the second page was the funding requests, and Matt Feeney and I had discussed the possibility, as we did receive the $750,000 in this past legislative session for our request, that we would be looking for the possibility of some direction. Our suggestion may be to advocate for possibly more home buyout programs as well, since we were not able to get into the Phase Two, the federal government, and offer the Phase Two of the home buyout program. As you know, we have an excess of households than we have available for the funding that we received. But that was just a suggestion of what we could look at. If you wanted us to work in that direction, we could provide a number. Additionally, we will probably come back and ask council to change our December 16th meeting date to the evening so that your staff can attend the legislative priority session. And then we would ask that a member of council join us at that, at that session as well. We can bring that back for your next meeting, but we would need an elected official to attend with us. But both Matt and I myself would like to be in attendance to advocate with Carol for our priorities.
I'd be happy to join you, but we can talk about later.
You want something? Yes, Carol, who was Kathleen Pasadena?
She is our, she's our senator that we have that actually is our Senate Representative for the State House.
Okay, who is Adam Botana?
He is our newly-elected representative for this area, for this district.
When does he come into office?
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yes, sir.
And his session starts when this year?
The session starts on March 2nd, however, the committee meetings will start on January 11th. There'll be two weeks of committee meetings in January, two in February, and then March 2nd starts the 60-day session, which will end, God willing, on April 30th.
So you're, they're in session more than 60 days?
No, sir.
There's a meeting?
By the Constitution, it's only session, only lasts 60 days by Constitution.
You said two weeks before they're doing what?
We're doing committee meetings. The committee meetings are time for the committees to actually meet to discuss legislation.
These are our representatives' meetings?
Yes, sir, and the senators, yes, sir.
But they're just talking, and they don't make a decision until the 60 days?
They, they make a lot of decisions before the 60 days. However, they cannot make official decision on any particular piece of legislation that is passed. What they do through the committee process is that they will then move bills, which we normally have about 2,000 bills every year, they move the bills through the committee process. So there were hearings on each of the bills that are filed, and once they're able to get those bills either through the committees or defeated in the committees, that's the pieces of material that then goes forward to the actual session when they can vote those bills out.
Now, you were a state representative at one time?
Yes, sir, for six years.
Four years or?
Six years.
Six years.
Also Secretary for the Department of Elder Affairs on Jeb Bush's cabinet.
Mr. Mayor, we also have some comments from some of the other council members.
Yes, Amy.
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I would be in favor of advocating for the home buyout program and adding that to the list here and would give a direction to the staff that they decide, you know, how much we should ask for and how they would run that. I also think it would be useful for you to provide us with a list of our delegation and the contact information, along with some, I always call it a cheat sheet, because when I have occasion to meet them at one thing or the other, I want to have in my mind something I should be talking about. So if you, and I think we talked about this last year, where you would help us all to be better proactive lobbyists for our point of view and to help you in your work. So if you would do those two things, and if the council would agree to adding that on to it, those are, those are my two things. I just have a comment, because I, it's interesting, and I don't dispute your figures, but in the paper, they're saying that the state government's revenues are a lot higher than what we had expected. So is that a current figure, $3 billion deficit, even with the renewed revenues that we're all supposed to be have, being having brought into the coffers?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I would tell you that what you're reading in the papers when you're talking about that, and we all are very happy to see that, the projections are bigger than what they thought they were going to be. It's not that the projections are bigger than what they normally would be.
Oh, okay.
So there's where, there's where that discrepancy comes in. And it's not $3 billion, it's 2.7, but I figured 2.7 I could round up to three. You know, it's government work, as they say, you know, the joke, the old joke. But I would also tell you that we are monitoring the situation now to see, because they just had organizational yesterday, we still don't know committee assignments for any of our local delegations specifically and committee assignments across the state. So once we have some of that locally especially, we're more than glad to give you all of that information so that we know how, number one, some of them don't have offices yet.
Right.
So when they have offices, staff, and all of those things, we'll compile a list and get that to you.
I so appreciate it, and thank you for the work that you've done for us in the past.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
And we look forward to a challenging year.
She's chuckling back here.
I can't wait.
Mr. Corey, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the things I wanted to discuss with council as part of this presentation is the fact that Adam Botana represents the first member of the House of Representatives from Benita Springs. And I think we would be well-served to ask Adam to meet with us at one of our upcoming meetings, once he understands what his committee assignments are and once he's got his priorities laid out in his mind. We want to use him, in addition to you folks. House of Representative member is in fact our local lobbyist up in Tallahassee, and we need to use both the abilities of Carol and we need to use the abilities of Adam to represent us. And if we can get Senator Pasadena to meet with us as well, that would be great, but I would just encourage that we do that.
I would completely concur with you, sir. I think that's very important to do, and it's certainly worth noting the fact that he is, he is a Benita Springs resident, which is a wonderful thing to have, is have someone in that position.
Carol, do you have any other clients?
Yes, sir.
How many?
Currently, we have three, three.
You have three cities or?
No, no, you're the only city that we represent. You're the only city we represent, and we have represented this city at least 10 to 12 years. I'd have to look to know the date exactly, but over 10 years. We also interact, just for your information, we also interact directly with the Florida League of Cities. We know that you're active members with the Florida League, and we certainly maintain a very close relationship with them on your behalf.
Yes, yes, Carol, did you write up this list, or where did this come from?
This list is a list that we had all agreed upon, and we've used for probably the last three or four years. So it was in conjunction with the council. This is not my list, it is your list.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So Mayor and Council, if you're comfortable with the list and the idea of staff working towards a home buy- towards a home buyout program, then we'll use that as our direction. We'll further come back with the meeting changed to the evening, and we'll look for direction for a representative of council to join us.
If, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, Ashley, do you have some comments you'd like to add? Okay. I just wanted to make sure if she had comments that she was writing down that she could add those. So we're good. Okay, good. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for what you did. Really appreciate it.
Abs.
Yeah. Well, I'm just gonna suggest to Arlene and staff, could we consider the possibility of broadening that to buyout, as well as that money could be used to do the thing on the elevating? Because you only give them 40 grand, and then SBA comes up with a 30-year mortgage, so you can get
Correct. We could look
You get more homes done for less money.
We could look at buyout and also retrofitting.
Good.
Anything else for anybody? If not, we will stay in contact with Arlene as far as moving everything forward with the delegation meeting and with any meetings that we need to set up with the representative and the senator. And any questions, obviously, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and council, the next item is a presentation update from Waldrop Engineering relating to the Shangri-La property.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Allison DeForre, and I'm the trustee for the affected properties. And I want to begin by saying that I have absolutely no ask of you whatsoever. So that should get us off to a good start. I have no requests to make of you at all.
I'm sorry. Did you say your name again?
My name is Allison DeForre, and I ain't asking for nothing.
Okay, you're on.
That's the main thing.
All right. Thank you.
The broad, we owe you a report by virtue of an agreement that we entered into with the city to get our properties in, sort of into the downtown planning process in a coordinated fashion, and have been very supportive. As you know, this is the gem of the city of Benita. It's the oldest extant building in the city, I think, and one of the oldest in Lee County. And we are very delighted to be doing that. This is basically what we have asked, what we will be presenting to you is sort of the playing field. Are we, is it a baseball diamond? Is it a lacrosse field? Is it a rugby? You know, we have to know what the parameters are within which we can work before we can even know what we want to do. We have a very wonderful relationship with your staff, and a very long one. As you know, my principal is patient and has a very serious commitment to quality. Those of you who've been on that property know that he has not been in a hurry, but he has been extremely diligent. There's not even a drop of pesticide on that property anywhere. So that takes a lot of work, and we've been at it for a bit. It is now time to begin to integrate into your planning process and begin to look at what will be done on this property for the longer term. And I'll turn it over to Waldrop to present the slides. And then, but let me just make one personal commitment to you on both a personal level and because of my wife's work. She is on the city council in the city of Jacksonville, and if you can imagine anything more difficult, they have 19 people on their city council. So take courage, it could get crazier. And the
You said that to ask.
And the thing I will tell you is that I will never, because of her work and my own work in my own life, I will never mislead you, and I will never waste your time. So with that commitment, I'll now turn it over to Alexis from Waldrop, and we will be brief and be out.
Thank you.
Good morning. Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering, representing Allison and the landowner. Laura Walker is also here from Waldrop. She's the landscape architect.
Alexis, could you speak up a little bit?
Sorry. Okay, hear me now? Okay, that's better. Laura Walker is here with me as well this morning. She prepared the master plan that we wanted to present to you today. As Allison noted, this is just an informational update. We will be back before you, hopefully in very short order, with the finalized master plan for your ultimate approval. Allison's group owns all of the lands that are highlighted on that aerial location map on the screen. The purple property is the Shangri-La, the gem of downtown, if you will. But what we are here to talk about today and what is subject to the agreement are the lands in green and orange that are south of Tennessee Street and are currently in industrial use. We have been waiting patiently to start planning this property. We wanted to have the good work of DPZ completed, which was just done last month. That good work brought this property finally into the downtown master planning area. And you can see we are outlined there in the green box. We are in the downtown innovation district, very appropriate for the existing industrial uses. And then there are intent to develop some dynamic live-work type space within the property. And so I know that's not super visible on the screen, but what we will bring forward at a future meeting is a more detailed version of this master plan. What Laura has done here is laid out a block form plan of how buildings could be developed on this site in accordance with your DPZ master plan. This follows all of those build-to-lines, development standards and regulations that were just adopted into your land development code. So this will very much be meeting that urban intent, where we have the buildings close to the edge of pavement. We will have on-street parking, walkway seating areas, so that it's a true urban feel. And then mix in the public components that are required by your code, park space, civic space, et cetera. The intent of these buildings are really to let the market demand guide us, but certainly in the downtown innovation district, we allow out a broad array of office, retail-type uses, again, more business-related, but also live-work units. So we do envision upper-story residential, which will not only help drive business on this site, but also restaurants and other retail things in the downtown area. So we were very excited that we're at this point, and look forward to coming back before you at a future meeting with the finalized plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, there are some questions from the council.
Mayor.
Yes, Amy.
I just want to ask one question. This is following the Form-based code that was identically just adopted. Is that how you're putting the buildings on there and everything? So basically, you're saying we're going to make it look, the concept is that we're going to make it look appropriate, and then we'll fill it with what we have to in order to fulfill our commercial interests. Is that it?
That is.
This is exciting, because I think this is the first time that we've seen any potential project, product, coming from the effort that we've made over too many years, I'd say. So thank you for bringing it forward, and I happen to love that property, and I just like walking there, and I've been there for, you know, lunch from time to time. And I can't wait for the Basque season to be over so that we can really interact in a positive way. You've done a great job. It's just a pleasure to be there, and it's a great asset to the city. So thank you for bringing the first Form-based code. I'm so excited about it. And I want to see, you know, I can't really, I see the white, but I see a more detailed plan would be great, you know?
I, if I can just say, I share your love of Addison's commitment here. My career took kind of an odd turn, and I ended up as an Episcopal priest doing prison ministry. I completely left the practice of law.
Oh, my God.
But I told my bishop when I did that, I said, "The one thing I want to have to keep is being trustee of this property because of my personal relationship with Addison and his love of this property." And my family's roots in Lee County go back to the '40s. So he's been kind enough to let me continue. And the love of Addison for this place is manifest, and we will not abandon that by an inch, I promise.
Just relay a heartfelt thank you from a Benidan residence that has enjoyed it.
Did it, did it?
Yeah. A personal thank you.
And I'd like to say that, you know, I had the pleasure of meeting with you yesterday afternoon, and you were just giving me the courtesy, you know, once over. I toured the whole facility. Okay. So one of the things I like about you, you're a lawyer, sheriff, and a jailhouse preacher. That's awesome. I mean, you don't find, Amy is a former sheriff of Key West, right? And his wife's on Jacksonville Council. You were a pleasure to get to know. The facility looked great. I can't echo Amy enough, and Form-based code is something that we've wanted for a long time. The fact that not only is it happening, but you guys upped the time. People don't realize, you're a year early. So we came through, and now you guys, as continuing to be good partners, are coming through early. You're not asking for anything. So I'm just really pleased with what's going on over there. And I appreciate you. It's been a pleasure to get to know you, Allison. And, you know, your staff is really kicking butt over there. It looks great. So thank you.
Alexa.
Laura, you want to speak?
No, I just, I already said thank you. You guys are great. Looking forward to it. I love Shangri-La. Restaurant's great. Everything's wonderful.
Anybody else? What we got to do with this?
You don't have to take any action on this. They're just required to come back and give you an update on their plan.
Okay.
So everything's been taken. According to your agenda, you can take another recess if you'd like. If not, move into the mayor's comments and council member comments.
I suggest we move on.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we want to recess?
No, Chris said move on. Do you need to recess? You're the mayor. What do you want to do?
I think we can go. Is there a public comment now?
Well, no, no. At this point, it'd be time for any council members and yourself, Mr. Mayor, to have any items that you would like to be considered for the future, to raise those items for discussion, to come back at a future date. And you can go down through the districts, or members can ask to be recognized.
We've got some members for you. Fred, do you have anything to say?
Nope.
Mike?
I'm good today. Thanks.
Mr. Corry.
Yes, thank you. I was looking forward to our meeting that was supposed to have occurred Monday. And I would like for us to reschedule that meeting at, you know, sometime, hopefully between now and when the holidays get really busy. But I would hope we could do that in early December after Thanksgiving, so that we can have that discussion on how we deal effectively with each other and how we go about these meetings in the most efficient way. So I'm open to anybody's suggestion on that as far as a date. But I do think we need to go ahead and have that particular meeting.
Anybody else?
I concur with Chris, and I would hope staff could kind of throw out dates, and we all can get together. But it is getting busy, so probably after Thanksgiving, if that would be okay with the mayor, maybe we could find a date, or after the New Year, whatever you two, sir. You have to speak up? Oh, well, Wonder Gardens, really great, wonderful improvements, met our new director. And even the pets seem happier. So it's all good.
Yes. Jesse, you have a comment?
No, I just want to congratulate you, Chris, on your reelection, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations to you.
Well, thank you so much. But, you know, we've got a, we have some unique personalities up here, but I think we're going to make it work for Benita, and I'm excited to do my part on that.
Don't forget Fred.
Oh, Fred. I'm sorry, Fred. You're such a permanent staple. I didn't even think about it. Congratulations, Fred. It was a close race. I'm glad you pulled through.
I just want to reiterate what Councilman Corry has said, and I suggest that perhaps in our next regularly scheduled council meeting, that we postpone anything other than the workshop and discussing about how we should operate as a council and the important broad issues that we are going to need to address in the future, including some education in regard to the land development code, all the overlays that we have, the policies that we already have in place, how we handle development issues that are brought, just a variety of things. I could probably list 20 of them. So I think we could devote an entire meeting to that. And if we can't get an alternative date, I suggest we do it on our next council meeting date, which is already established, and we all know what it is. But I think it's really important so that we can have cordiality among us and that we follow a procedure that is sensible and reasonable and professional.
Thank you. Let's see. I appreciate your condol, putting up with me in the first meeting. I'm sorry. I tried to get a cart ahead of the horse, I guess. I'm planning a town meeting at the, for me and the people, because I want to represent the people, at the Presbyterian Church. The date hasn't been set yet, but I will come up with a date. I understand that nobody from this council has to be there, or it would be just me and the people. I want to know what the people need, not necessarily want, what they need, and what the city can provide for them, such as road. But anyways, bear with me on this beginning of this four-year term. We have this quite a while yet. So that's about it, I guess. Thank you.
Now would be public comment on any item.
Kathy. Kathy McGrath.
All right.
She's been so busy.
Hello, everybody. For the record, Kathy McGrath, and I'm so excited to be here and see so many familiar faces. The reason you haven't seen me is, here's my uniform here, every Wednesday, I help at the Meals of Hope Mobile Food Pantry. And so after working there four hours, I could never make the evening meetings, but I pushed myself this morning on the way. And let me tell you, there's a great need here in Benita, but there's wonderful organizations, not just us. The Assistance Office, Terry Lemain, Cafe of Life, St. Matthews. I probably left a lot out. I mean, there's so many helping, and, you know, there is a need. So anyway, let me start off by saying congratulations to our newly elected officials. I do not use the word winners and losers. There are no losers. If you take the time to run for an office to represent something. So first, Rick, I think I've known you about 35 years, right?
Yeah, we've seen.
Chris, you don't know me, but a lot of people in Benita Bay know me. I was here before Benita Bay was there. And you know what I like about that? I go back, those that don't know, Mr. Shakarian, who's no longer alive, who put together that property, he did much like Walt Disney did. He put these little 10-acre properties and put that whole thing together. So I used to go fishing before it was there. Fred, welcome back. And Jesse, nice to see you. And yes, congratulations to Adam Botana. If you don't know, Adam is a businessman here, Rotarian. He owns, part-owner of Baywater Bay? No, Baywater Boat Club, that's it. And he puts on the boat parade every year. Congratulations. He replaced Ray Rodriguez, who termed out, who moved from Florida Congress to Florida Senate. So, and the other thing, I don't know if you know, I saw the headlines in the paper today. Kevin Ruane was named chairman of the Lee County Commission, and he just won the election there. So, okay, now let's see if I can cram this all in. The first upper, I want to say, I always try at the meetings to talk about something positive, is FEMA flood insurance. I live on the river. I'm very vulnerable. My elevation is 10 and 1/2 feet, and I'm built right down on the ground. I paid $4,100 in flood insurance this year. But I got a discount, and Arlene knows this because I found out this from you years ago. This was one of your duties, but I know somebody else is doing it now. If you have flood insurance, there's a line there that says, "Community rating discount." And they comply with a lot of regulations that FEMA requires, and that's what gets us this discount. So thank you, thank you. The other attaboy I want to give is to Jason Zacharino, who is a supervisor with Parks and Rec, and he's also our resident caretaker at the Benita Nature Place, place near and dear to my heart. And I've had so many people tell me how great it looks out there. Go out there someday, because I've even had them send pictures, you know. We have Cullums Trail along the headwaters. There's all kinds of trails. There's all kinds of gopher tortoises wandering around. If you want to unwind, go out there. It's really nice. wandering around, if you want to unwind, go out there, it's really nice. I want to mention briefly this proposed food truck park, I know there's a lot of controversy, there are some certain businesses downtown, and good friends of mine that are not thrilled where it's going to go, I think it was very well planned, I'm very much in favor of it. The Magnus family have other properties in town, they're local, they are local, and they put their money where their mouth is, and it's going to be a first-class thing, and I really think it's going to be an asset to downtown Benita, to even the businesses downtown, and they've also, they're going to improve that parking lot, where the Lions Club have their farmer's market for parking, but it's the city's property, they can do what they want with it, so, they are a real asset. And the only other thing is, I don't have a vote for it, but I feel that Mike Gibson would be an excellent deputy mayor, so whoever makes that decision, and again, it's so good to see you all, take care, keep well.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good to see you. Thank you, God.
Anybody else from the public like to shoot a fat, so to speak? Ken, Arianna, Esmond, do you have anything to say?
I've already said what I need to say.
Well, you can expand on it. Yes, Amy.
If we're done with public comment, I would like to have a short recess, if we're done with public comment, I would like to have a short recess.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to suggest that too.
Okay.
Are we done, recess? Okay, we're on recess.
Come back in five minutes.
20 minutes, 20 minutes, and then we're going to wrap it up in a hurry, okay?
I think, I think everyone, Mr. Mayor, everyone would be amenable to a shorter timeframe.
Five, 10?
Do you want to do shorter than 20 minutes?
Yeah, just...
20 minutes.
No, 10, he's in 10.
Would you like, would you like it to be shorter than 20 minutes, or, you know, we already cut the mics off.
Yeah.
Would you like it?
20 minutes.
He was asking.
I can't hear him.
Yeah, they cut the lights off soon as we...
It's right.
One, two, three, four. We have a, we have a quorum.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can grab everyone real quick.
Okay, where is our attorney? There he is.
All right.
All right, Mr. Rooney.
It's my time. I've been waiting the whole meeting to get my, my opinion got there. Mayor and Council, I've got three items for you today. The first one, and I'll, for some of you who, this is just a renewal of vows, but for the new members, this is basically just a recognition of the city council's adopted rules of ethics. Most of it is simply a summary of the existing state rules in Chapter 112, but there are some additional rules that have been adopted pursuant to your charter with respect to the, the functions and operations and relationships between council members, between them and staff, between them and the public, rules of decorum. And so, we will be asking you to reconfirm your commitment to those rules. And to sign, are you, are you okay Debbie? Do you need help? And to then execute and sign and acknowledge those rules. And of course, if anyone needs to, to discuss any of those items or go over them privately, we're happy to do that. And that's it. Do we have any, any questions? There's no requirement to take a vote on this unless you're requesting some form of change to the rules.
And do we sign it, date it today and hand it to Debbie?
Yes, that would be the place to do. Are there any comments from the council mayor?
Yes, I, I read it on the internet. We have to vote on that?
No, no, these are, these are the existing and standard policy of the council. You would only take action on these if you wish to change them at some point in the future. But as I said, most of it is fairly innocuous, or it's just a recitation of the state law already.
Okay, I, I read it, I saw it was on the agenda and I picked it up on the internet and read it.
Okay.
Okay, can we move along?
Absolutely. The next item is, you know, the big event. This is a, it's time for you after each election, you are to vote for a new deputy mayor. The procedure for that has, has not really been established, but it, it's open to nominations from the chair or from the floor, and then we can take action on those items individually. Mr. Mayor?
I nominate my.
We have three.
I think I get the first shot at the.
Please.
I'd like to nominate Mike Gibson.
Okay.
I second.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any further nominations?
Well, I was gonna nominate myself, but I guess it's gonna be mine. So, that's all.
What's the procedure there, Mr. Mayor?
At this point, if there's no other nominations, you can call the, the vote and move forward. Debbie, are you ready?
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Perton?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I, I recommended him because of his location and experience. His business is worked out on 041, and he is currently the deputy mayor, and that's, I'm really pleased to have him. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. And speaking of his location and experience, that brings us to our next item, which is looking for direction from the council on whether to proceed further with the Levin Lot. We have the, the letter of intent that was prepared following the council's acceptance of the proposal from Chris and Jim Magnus. They are here to answer questions, but what was before you now is a recitation of the actual terms of the agreement, should you wish to move forward. We have CBRE here available with questions. I know they did provide a cover memo with some, some additional recommendations, but at this point, it's, it's really up to, to the council to decide if they'd like to move forward on that little LOI. The next step would be to bring a purchase and sale agreement, instituting those terms, and that would then lock us in towards moving to closing and finalizing due diligence items. It may be beneficial at this time to have the, the Magnuses come up, if that's the council's pleasure, and give a, a brief summary of their proposal, or you can ask CBRE to do so, or move forward with questions and answers yourself. I'll, I'll leave it up to your determination.
Can we go around the table? Fred, do you have a comment about this?
Yes, I, I do, Mr. Mayor. I took the liberty of preparing a document, which I was at each, each person's place this morning, which should have been. Basically, all I'm doing is proposing that certain language be added to give two things. One is, you don't want to, by not indicating that the city has rights to sell the other properties, that they're gonna pave.
This is not it, is it?
Without any liability on their part for doing it. Things like that needed added in. The other thing I think needs to be added in is a clear understanding that if we go ahead and approve the ROI, that if for some reason in the zoning process, one of the asks that they make doesn't get approved, there's no problem, because we cannot guarantee before a zoning meeting that we're gonna approve zoning that has to take place.
Yeah, makes sense, thanks. Mike, you're, you're close to this project.
No, I think it's a great project, and I'm looking forward to it moving forward. Thank you.
Corey, do you have any opinion on this?
I am still of the opinion that it will be a good project for downtown. It will draw people in, and that's what needs to be done. I look forward to the completion of the project. I thought the drawings submitted last meeting showing the park were very persuasive in terms of what it's gonna look like. I've since done more background on the Magnus family, and I will say that both Jim Magnus and Chris Magnus are, in my view, very honorable people, very, somebody that we can rely upon when we want to partner with them in terms of developing downtown, so I'm in favor of moving forward.
And Laura, do you have a comment on this?
Originally, dead set against having a food truck park downtown, but the presentation and how the Magnus family is going to do the food park is gonna be a draw. It's gonna be a positive. It's gonna be a positive for the restaurants. It's gonna be a positive for the town, and I think for Imperial Crossings to get a much better, like, you know, presentation. And so, we will have more hope for a better offer for downtown, and the Magnus family is excited. And what people have to understand, it's also gonna be family oriented, which is really important and fun. So, it's not gonna be party land, it's gonna be fun land. I don't know, I'm sorry. So, yeah, I'm in favor.
Mr. Jesse?
Absolutely in favor. I've, I've talked to them from the very beginning of this project. I'm just excited to see it come to fruition. I think it's gonna activate downtown. I think they've been good, good partners in the community on a number of projects, and I know that they have very high standards, so I would assume that's gonna transfer over. I'm excited.
I'm sorry that I wasn't, I had to leave at a six-hour meeting that we had the last time when this was, because I had another meeting that I had attend, had to attend to, so I didn't participate in any of the discussion. I, perhaps it's because I am not as well informed as of the rest of you who were introduced to the presentation, but I do not believe that a food truck is appropriate for the location. And, and again, if you look at the Form-based code.
Excuse me, you say it was appropriate?
Appropriate for the location.
She said it is not.
Not appropriate.
It is not appropriate for the location. And, and I also am concerned because, again, if you look at our Form-based code, we do not encourage parking areas along 41. I have a lot, particular questions about, like, for example, do they have a liquor, it's basically an outdoor alcohol provision is, is what it is there. So, I, I really am not in favor of the project, and I'm gonna vote against it. I hope that I'm wrong, but I, what I would propose is that I think that, I think Jesse, at the last meeting suggested that instead of selling the property, that we do a land lease. I would be very much in favor of that, so that if indeed you're right and I'm wrong, we have a fallback position, because I am concerned about, you know, what we're really trying to do down there. So, if we had a land lease, even a long one, I would feel more comfortable with it, because food trucks are fun, but whether they're still gonna be viable 10 years from here, I don't know. And whether this is appropriate to put in competition to our restaurants down there, I have an issue with that. So, if we could encourage that direction in this sales agreement, I would be more in favor of it. That's what would be my recommendation. So, you could go along, have them try it out, see if they're successful, and if we all love it, even if we had a provision that after 10 years they could purchase the property, we could have a, you know, a buy sale, we could do it a different way. I don't think we should sell them the property, because it would give the city the opportunity to really look at it. That's my opinion.
Okay, my opinion is that we should have some more bids on something else. We have one bid, we put this out to bid to sell this property, we only have one, one person come along. I don't see these food trucks matching up with our dreams of this downtown Bonita Springs. We have a trailer hot dog stand that they allowed it, it's got a year or so left before it has to go, because it certainly doesn't look, doesn't look modern or something. So, do we have to vote on this, Mr.?
Yes, I would recommend you vote to accept the LOI. If the council would like to hear from either the Magnuses or, or CBRE to address any of the issues raised, I, I think that would also be appropriate. I would only ask, in, if you do move forward with the LOI, there are a number of open points in the, as proposed. Two of those points, I think, do require some additional directions, so that the city and the Magnuses can work out the terms of those, and those are related to the Lemon Tree Lot, and the, the lot that's currently used by the, the library services. Whether we would also want to have them come in and improve those two additional parking areas, once, at least when Lee County is no longer using it for the library, that additional lot be available. I think we need that direction, because it does impact their, their intended improvements and what their project will be based on. So, with that, if you would like to hear from them or hear from CBRE for any additional comments, otherwise, we can, we can move forward the vote.
Any further comment? Fred?
Yeah, just one comment. If, I'd like to hear from Magnus on how many of these things they're willing to accept, because I'm not, I would support, and I did support this, but I want these clarifications, for the most part, in that agreement, in that LOI, because if we don't, if we're boxing ourselves in on all kind of stuff that I don't think, I think they would agree to most of that, I'd like to hear from them.
Further comment? Do I get a further comment?
I agree with Fred. We'll go ahead and, and hear from the Magnuses, and then see if anybody wants to hear from CBRE.
I would like to hear from CBRE also.
Would you like to hear from them first?
No, not unless you wanna hear from them first.
I'm, I'm, I'm here for, at your leisure, for whatever that you guys would prefer us to do.
Maybe addressing Councilman Forbes' questions first?
Addressing, we just, Fred just gave, or we just got these at the break here, at this most recent break, and I, I think that some of these items are already covered, because they're part of the RFP that we presented. And since we presented the RFP, the RFP includes some of the things that, that Fred has here. There are a couple of items, such as the, the very first one, he's trying to, at this point, make it so that the Lemon Tree Park could be sold, or could be given for some other use other than parking at some future date. Is that correct, Fred?
Well, I'm not, I don't have anything in mind. I just think that, my understanding has been from staff, that we would have that right, even though you've got it paid. All I'm looking for is a confirmation that that is correct. That doesn't mean that if they wanted to sell it, you couldn't bid on it.
The, as far as, so long as the parking calculations work, you know, if you wanted to do something different with the Lemon Tree Lot, I mean, you could certainly do that. That, the Lemon Tree Lot is gonna be owned by the city, and it's gonna be parking for the entire community and everything else that's around it, Fred. So, it was not our intention to, it was our intention to be able to use that for our parking calculation.
Right, and the only thing I was looking for is, right now, if that's your intention, and that's, could be a possibility, you just put it in the document that way.
Councilman Forbes, could you, could you speak into?
Yes, I said, when, if there's two people that both agreed to something, rather than be a verbal thing, just put it in the agreement. That's, that's real simple.
If I may, I just wanna maybe help clarify for the rest of the council what I think is being asked. The, the proposal that, in the response to the, to the RFP, the Magnuses requested the ability to make improvements to the Lemon Tree Lot, to add a non-exclusive parking arrangement, that parking would be open to the public, and under our code, open to the public parking could be utilized for their calculation. Councilman Forbes? Councilman Forbes was requesting what happens if the remainder of the Lemon Tree Lot is developed for some other city purpose, playground, something like that. If that happened, would there be an objection from the Magnuses? And I think, what I'm hearing is, they would not have an objection, provided that the parking that they are then paying to, to improve, would still be allowable for their use in their calculation.
Correct.
Can I speak? This project does not, all right. You have employees, you're going to have employees at this place?
I think John Dahmer has something to say.
Just if, along those lines, if we're looking at...
Reason I ask, I can't hear you, but the reason I ask that is if you have employees in this restaurant, where are they going to park? You're not creating any parking spots, except for eight, I think you said, eight parking spots.
And, and I don't want to...
So, you got, you got people to work, you're going to have employees that need a place to park.
Yeah, I under, I understand your question. We do have the bioreactor area where we would have actually employees park as far away as possible from the site. But I think that if you, we'll let John talk. John will talk about what the requirements are for parking, and he will confirm that we do have the required parking that is required for food trucks.
Well, I'm not interested in paving the Lemon Tree property for your use.
Okay, that's, certainly, we accept that as your opinion, Mayor.
Uh, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you clarify, Mr. Magnus, it will only be for the food park or it'll be for downtown parking?
It's for downtown parking. It would not be just exclusively for the food truck park.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, one of you, either John or you, is the required parking solely within the property that is under question to be sold?
No, ma'am.
All right, so they are required, they are, they are using quote "city" parking to meet their parking requirements.
Correct.
But if I, I want to clarify, just because the RFP process, they can make their project work, but at a smaller scale without the Lemon Tree parking. At the, at the scale that they have proposed, they would need the Lemon Tree Lot for, for their, their calculation. As far as the question, just to answer the question, get it out there now, if, if we want a provision that says that the remainder of the Lemon Tree Lot can be developed by the city for other public purposes, and those lots can, can still be shared, we could add that to the development agreement. It wouldn't, you know, that would be something that would come back, and we could mutually agree to that. So, it's, it's just something, if that's what everyone wants, we can do that.
And we could also bifurcate the parking requirements, so that you could approve them at a lower or at a lesser generation rate, so that their property would stand alone. Any improvements they made off-site of their property could be done, but it would not be tied directly to the required parking. So, that way, if something does happen in the future, if the property does transition into a different use or a different owner, it would not directly impact this particular project, if that's what council wanted to do. But that way, you'd at least keep those two parking questions separated.
Just really quickly...
Excuse me, John? Does that include the drainage for that property, I mean, for that Lemon Tree property?
The, the... Conceptual permit that the city has for the downtown area includes, I believe, over 95% impervious space. So, what was done when the city made those improvements to drainage in, in that defined area, was assumed that 95% to 97%, I forget the exact number, would be impervious, and that drainage system would be able to accommodate all of that, that drainage system. So, if they do provide something, it basically just adds volume to the ledger, but they're not required to provide additional drainage on their property. That was one of the reasons of this, of this project, was so that we could accommodate more of a compact and urban development in that area.
And they also have impermeable, impermeable ground on their...
Correct.
Food truck area.
Correct. And, and what we had taken as a general assumption, when, when the city's consultant presented this to the district for permitting, was that every property would be over 95%. So, what their volume of stormwater, they calculated, was based upon a very high impervious volume. That volume can be accommodated by the, the infrastructure that we've installed, and the purpose of that was to allow for people to develop their property without having to take vast swaths aside for drainage or for stormwater. We had also provided some additional parking, so that a little bit of that burden could be reduced. And there were some other things that we had done to foster this type of development, to accommodate it, because what we realized several years ago was, we were asking for an urban-type development, but our, not only did our land development code require more of a suburban design, the infrastructure was not in place to accommodate it. Since then, we've tried to address both. First, through the infrastructure, and just recently, at your last meeting, the Form-Based Code dealing with the development standards. So, we have been consistently moving in the direction that would allow for, for more urban development downtown.
And, Mr. Mayor, may I ask one more clarification from the Magnuses while they're up there? Mr. Magnus, the Banyan Tree Lot, the one, if I'm correct, you do not require that for your calculations. Your supposition is that you are willing to make improvements to that, because you believe that your project will be so successful, additional parking may be advantageous to the city and to your project, and you're willing to, to improve that?
Correct.
Okay. So, so before the council, you have, you have three items, and then if you want to speak to CBRE. One is whether to proceed forward with the LOI to actually move towards a purchase contract. Second, if you decide to do that, do you want to include the, the Lemon Tree in, as proposed, with, maybe with the modifications that Councilmember Forbes added? And three, do you want to include the Banyan Tree at some point in the future, when Lee County no longer utilizes it? And I suspect it would be, to similar provisions, we would be able to redevelop it without affecting their parking rights.
Is there any way we could postpone this decision for, for a number of months and get some other bids on this piece of property? We only have one bid. I don't understand.
That, that is absolutely the council's priority.
That would be my recommendation. Before you go spending a lot of money working with the development...
Rick? If I might, Mayor, if I might make a couple of comments here. We've been working on this for, and I think John can attest to it, we've been looking to try to put a food truck park in downtown Bonita Springs for almost two years now. And we've been working on this for a long time, and we've been trying to put something together to make it work. And this has been an option of something that we feel would be good for the city, and it would be good for us, and we felt that it would be a project that, that would do, do well and activate downtown. And for you to go and to go out to bid, after all of our ideas and our plans have been put out on the market and showing exactly what's there, would be really an injustice to us and an injustice to the process.
Have you purchased the property?
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to purchase the property from the city, Mayor.
Yes.
You haven't, you don't own the property?
No, this was an RFP that was presented back in, I think they started the work in September of last year, and it went out to RFP, and we responded to the RFP with, with the plan.
Would a six-month or three-month delay kill you or...
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, have some other comments from the council?
I make a motion to approve...
Second. Second.
Yes, Amy.
Could we have the CBRE, could we have the CRB have a statement about what their proposal, what their recommendations are?
Mr. Gage, Mr. McShay, or whoever's on the phone, could you give a brief summary of your recommendations?
Excuse me?
Yes, uh, I had asked...
Hold on a sec, hold on a second, Jeff.
I had asked the Magnus...
I'm kind of hearing a little bit of rebirth here, so please tell me if I'm clear.
You're clear, but could you give us two minutes? Mr. Mayor, did you want to give the floor?
So, our assigned task was creating a destination for the Central Business District. We call it the Bioprint CBD of Bonita Springs, and to activate downtown. It's important to note that we were not looking for just a buyer of a piece of land. We were looking for a developer who would commit to making improvements to the site and create that destination. We encourage you to focus on the $3.2 million investment that the Magnuses have, are proposing to make, not just the $125,000 purchase price. This is a high-end development, labeling it, it has a food truck park picked away from its stature in the fall of the budget that's proposed. Our process involved exposing the opportunity to over 500,000 prospects globally. The idea was to hit institutional incentives as well as local investors. And as you may be aware from the history, that, you know, we actually landed two proposals, although they were ironically on, on different sites. We had 102 registrations, which means that folks went through the process to enter what we call a virtual deal room and download the information and materials needed to respond to the RFP. We received two actual proposals. When I went back and interviewed many of those 102 prospects, they declined because they were uncertain of the location. The Central Business District of Bonita Springs has not been proven yet, and a lot of the investors were saying, "We don't want to be first." So, this puts the Magnuses in a very unique position, in that they're willing to risk that $3.2 million in, in developing this site. The concerns of some of the others were that there were fundamentals they look at, job growth, median wage growth, workforce makeup, key industries and employers that, that are in the area. They're, they're labeled as, as demand drivers. Regarding the LOI, when we interviewed the respondents, we focused on the credentials of the developer and the ability to perform, not necessarily the number of proposals that we received. One good proposal is much better than a dozen unqualified responses. I think what you have in front of you right now is a qualified developer for a proposed food truck park that we feel comfortable will perform. When we negotiated the letter of intent, we focused on a structure that will create benchmarks of accountability and financial incentives or penalties if the developer does not do what they said they would do. And we've made a lot of progress in getting an LOI in place that will serve as the foundation for a purchase and sale agreement. So, our goal and our recommendation to the city is to, to move forward. We think that this will activate downtown. It is a destination type of development, so you're going to create demand for new people coming into the area that would not otherwise choose to dine in the CBD of Bonita Springs. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the city manager has a comment, and I also believe that Mr. Councilman Forbes may have had an amendment.
Mayor, council, we just want to remind you, as the required, the required parking is not needed for the Banyan Tree parcel. That was not a part of the LOI process. I did want to remind you all that previously, you had some design schematics that were done for that parcel, particularly as a vista to the library. We put those on hold, because we were in the negotiation process with Lee County for parking. Originally, there was going to be an interactive playground there, possibly a splash pad, and that was to be the location of the farmer's market moving there to a green space. So, if we do move forward, we do need to bring those plans back and recirculate, and also work again with Lee County to see. But the original vision for council previously was not a parking lot in that area. It was part of a continuation of the park.
That's for the Banyan Tree, correct?
For Banyan Tree parcel, which was not included in the LOI.
Those details could be worked out before, before the development agreement on the Banyan Tree, but I, as I said before, we would definitely need to know the details on the Lemon Tree Lot in order to move forward.
So, would you approve this without this parking lot? Save you some money?
Which parking lot? Banyan or Lemon Tree?
Lemon Tree parking lot, if that was not part of the deal?
Uh, we would, we would move forward, however, I do think that Councilman Forbes' request on that particular thing is probably to the city's advantage, because here, we would actually be improving that parking lot, which I think would be, would be an advantage for the city, Mayor.
Well, now, my improvement would be a kid's park or something, an extension of the existing park, that we have put millions of dollars into developing a beautiful park downtown, and...
So, long as you would give us the, the parking calculations that we need, we would be fine.
What was that again?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think what he's saying is, that would not be foreclosed by their proposal.
I actually, one of the things that, not only how wonderful the park has been explained in the drawings and the details and how much you're going to invest, but the fact that you were willing to also improve property that the city owned and will always own, that you're going to add parking is ju, is, was terrific. I think it's an added point to what you're bringing to downtown, and I thank you.
Thank you, Laura, because there is actually a kid's park in the, in the food truck park. There is actually an area for...
A kid's park?
For kid's park with a misting wall.
Yeah. I mean, so parents can actually watch their kids as they have iced tea, play.
Should we go forward with this? I would like to put in some kind of procedure that we incorporate the city, like Arlene just described, incorporate the city's vision for what we're trying to do down there, and to just see how it fits in with our current plans, including the Banyan Tree Park. And I still go back to the, to the point that I would prefer this not be a sale, but some kind of a long-term lease agreement with provision for them to own the property after some relatively short period of time, where they've shown that, that the performance is adequate and we want it downtown. I'm, I'm against the sale of the, of the property, to do it a different way.
Yes, Derek.
Mr. Mayor, just, just, we could, we could easily, moving forward with this, we would be bringing both a purchase and sale agreement and a development agreement. The development agreement would cover their timelines for build-out. Also, it would cover the provisions relating to the off-site parking at Lemon Tree or, and, and/or Banyan Tree. We could easily work to see what the city's past plans have been for those parcels, so that that all is clear to everyone at the time that that goes forward.
Thank you, Derek.
What I fear is, when you go to the developing people, and they say, "Well, you can't build this." You know, you, you gotta, John Dahmer has to be involved with what they're building on his property, and he's going to charge, somebody's going to charge you more money to come back to us, and they may recommend turning you down. I'm trying to protect everybody here.
There, there will be a due diligence period under the purchase agreement, that they'll have to go forward, and to avoid any risk on their, they will get a special exception for the use and, and go through community development. So, we're not promising them the final use. They'll have to go through that process before the property closes.
Yes, Cor.
I'd just like to note that they're putting a total of $3.2 million into this project. I think the idea of, of a lease, I don't think it makes economic sense, if I'm the applicant for this project. If you're telling me that I'm going to put $3.2 million, and then I can only lease the property that I improved for 10 years, I'm not going to do it. Now, I would do it if the city wanted to put in half the money as equity, but I don't know that that's anything that the city wants to do. The applicant before us is taking all the risk with respect to the $3.2 million. So, I would just encourage us to tamp down the thought that there's some sort of a land lease that we want to take as a backup provision, because I don't think that's ever, that's not even realistic.
We're not interested in doing that.
Yes, Fred.
Yeah, what, what I, I would like to do is ask the Magnus, is there anything that was in the agreement or the proposal that would be difficult? What I'd like to do is, if you, if you all say you're willing to work with Derek... What I'd like to do is if you all say you're willing to work with Derek and Arlene to get the spirit of what I wrote into the agreement, then I want to vote for this.
I think that the spirit of what you have here is correct, Fred, but I'm not willing to adjust the LOI. And the reason that I'm not willing to adjust the LOI for the items, because some of this stuff is all part of the RFP, and it's covered in the RFP, which is what the LOI goes to. You know, you talk about there shall be no lights up above and stuff like that. Well, you know, I don't know exactly how that, some of that will work. So to go specifically to what you have here, I think that most of that, and I think I can maybe refer to the city attorney, is pretty similar to what's on there.
Here's my main, the main things I'm most interested. Number one, if down in the future, not necessarily this council, but another one says we're going to open up Old 41 to food trucks or other food truck parks, I just want to make sure that that doesn't cause a problem, because you might say, "Well, we thought we had the exclusive rights." I don't think that's what you're thinking, but...
We don't, we're not asking for any exclusive rights. We're not...
So that's one, and the other one is simply that what you build is what you show. They just got that beautiful, what do you call it, crow's nest?
That was the other project that had a crow's nest. We do have a...
What do you call in yours?
Rooftop at Riverside.
There you are.
And we do have a rooftop viewing area.
I just want to make sure that that's what we get, because we have had in the past, without putting any project, and none of your projects, where the developer comes in and has pictures on this, and what is built is not what was approved.
Councilman Forbes, just to help this process along, the proposal moving forward, as I said, would have a development agreement, which would have timetables and milestones based on the plans they've submitted. In addition, there are provisions in the RFP to make sure that there's a, the city takes a lean against the property to make sure that it's constructed on those timelines. There is also a requirement that a special exception be provided. That special exception will come before you. It'll probably mirror the exact request that was in the RFP. So all that happens pre-closing, closing on the property. What the purpose of the LOI is today is to make sure that neither the city nor the Magnus's move forward and expend any further energy on this if those terms are not agreeable to the council.
Yes, Amy.
I was just going to give a recommendation for how we could proceed. Unless I can't count properly, it looks like there's a sense of the council that they want to move forward with this. So could we at least figure out if the sense of the council is that we want to move forward? And I think that the information that we have suggests that there are a couple of directions that they're asking the council to make, one of which is what to do about the lemon lot, and the second one is to try to, there's some fail-safe wording in here, so if they want to flip the property to give protections back to the council. So if we can get the sense that in general we want to go forward, even if we have these little nuances that we haven't quite worked out, can we at least go that way? And if, unless we're going to vote it down, let's at least know whether we want to go forward, and then we could work on, and maybe Derek could help us on these individual things, and we could give them the sense of what we want to go forward.
Yes, there's, I believe there's a motion on the floor to accept the LOI as is. And if, I'm looking into the motion maker in a second, or to accept it as is would mean that we would move forward, and there would also be provision to allow them to make improvements through the development agreement for both Lemon Tree and Banyan. That would be the current motion, so that would cover all those outstanding items. If that's not correct, and we need to break out the Lemon Tree and the Banyan, then we should break those out separately. But as I understood, the motion that was made after my initial request, that's where we stood.
Correct.
Okay, one more question. How does this fit into the urban design that we just paid a lot of money to have an urban design? John?
It's always in a comfortable feeling when everybody turns around and looks at...
I ask tough questions. Speak into the mic, please. Thank you.
The design of this is going to have to be reviewed when it's actually proposed. They have submitted a very detailed set of plans, but those plans are going to have additional detail on them when they come to our office, and they will also have that same level of detail when it's proposed to you or presented to you as part of the special exception for approval. So they're going to have to meet development standards in terms of setbacks, height, architectural features. All of those items and elements will need to be included and evaluated as part of their process, and then it will be brought to you for ultimate consideration.
Do you charge for that?
Yes, we did. It's a fee for a special exception. There's also a fee for advertising in the newspaper.
Do you have any idea how much it would be?
Not off the top of my head, no, sir, but I could give that to you.
Okay, anybody else?
Are you ready?
Go for the vote. Is that proper?
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karamba?
No, I would like to exclude those two areas, but if you exclude it, I'll vote yes the next time around, but I'm going to vote no now.
Jesse.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
It passes five to two.
Thank you very much, council, and we will have a project that you will all be proud of, even those that voted against it. We will have a project that everyone in the city will be proud of.
That is the last of my items, Mr. Mayor. Turning it over to Arlene.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to remind everyone of their opportunities to participate in the Lee Cares program. Again, our human services folks, our 501(c)(3)'s within the city should be able to apply for that $50,000 in grant funds. That open enrollment is still happening. There is the Individual Assistance Program for Utilities, and there is no discrimination whether you have received benefit prior. And there's also, again, the continuation of the Child Care Assistance Program, and you can contact the United Way or Lee County directly for those benefits. I also wanted to advise you that on the grant funds that we have received from Lee County, the $800,000 that is to be used for city costs regarding COVID, we are looking to see the ability of adding air filtration cleaning systems in the air conditionings at City Hall and at the request of Councilwoman Karamba, also looking at the Lyles, and also looking at the Recreation Center. We are also pursuing the opportunity to be refunded for law enforcement activities during the appropriate time field, so we would then be able to have a credit to the general fund out of the line item for that. We're working on that. We'll have to work with the sheriff's office to determine a percentage of time used during that period. And additionally, we have incurred close to $90,000 in costs, which will be also applying for that grant as well, so we'll try to recuperate those costs. Also wanted to bring up that we did reschedule the meeting, and we would like, from Monday, the workshop, I think we received enough direction from you all that you'd like us to reach out for another date for that, so we'll bring that at a further meeting and probably bring a proposed agenda for that later on.
Thank you.
Okay, next would be the mayor and council members' reports.
How about COVID?
That was the COVID...
That was my COVID update, sorry.
That was the manager's COVID update on funding availability.
Yes, Amy.
I have four things to report for my report, and I'll try to, you're probably sick of hearing from me today, but anyway, I do want to say that one of the things that I did since the last meeting was to do outreach with the Lee County Commissioners to advocate for the Bonita Country Club Flood Mitigation Water Quality Improvement Project. And the point that I was making was that it does integrate, our project integrates with the Lee County South Lee Mitigation Plan. They have a project that we could just connect ours to. I was, I personally spoke with chairman, that chairman, Brian Hammond, Commissioners Cecil Prendergrass, and Ray Scandelli. In addition, I emailed and had correspondence with Kevin Ruane and Frank Mann, and I just want to say that I appreciate the courtesy and the attentiveness that they showed me when I was trying to advocate for our city position. And, you know, we still have a long way to go, and I do think that we have to continue our advocacy for this project as they move to the prioritization plan, but we had a very good reception, and all those council commissioners that I spoke to send their regards to our new council, so I was passing that along. I also want to say that I attended the Lee County Horizon Council Executive Board meeting, and it was really interesting, because I have to say, if I summarized it, and I'll try to summarize here so I don't take too much time, is that they're going full speed ahead. They're very active in their planning and the future, and in fact, they have set aside May 13th, the week of May 13th, to have a combination of in-person and virtual interaction for their industry appreciation events, the Blue Chip Awards, and for the first time, the Edison Awards. And what I thought was remarkable about it is that they're planning to have somewhere between 400 and 600 people, both virtually and in-person, to attend these very large events in the Luminary Hotel. So I just wanted to pass along sort of their efforts to get back to business, I guess you could summarize it that way. And also, as aside, as two other items that came up there that I wanted to just inform you about, that they are, the Lee County Horizon Council is trying to have somewhat of a uniform business permitting system, and I have encouraged them to integrate with our development director so that we could have input for what they're trying to do there. It may be good, it may not be good for us, but I think we need to have a more active part with them, and we're going to set up a meeting with the staff that they're working on and our staff. And just as a sidebar, I also interacted with State Representative Spencer Roach, who again was very receptive to what Bonita Springs is trying to do, and he offered his help, and I'm going to follow up on it with our legislative act with him, for any help we could have when we try to get our activities funded. And it was a very good networking experience, and again, this is what happens when we interact with different entities. You know who you're going to meet there, and it's good to talk to them. I also want to share that I attended the Art in Public Places Committee meeting, and Susan Bridges of the Centers for the Art offered a cooperative partnership arrangement for the city to participate in something called Octocast, which is a mobile app which could provide an audio guide to the public art in Bonita Springs. It's, I'm really excited about it, and I hope that we'll get a presentation of it in the future, but it's virtually costless, though there might be some operational costs, but very low cost that we could have the ability for us to advertise a really extensive collection of art that we have in Bonita Springs. And just a comment on the Everglades Wonder Garden. We were provided with financial and planning materials that we had requested that came recently, like a week or so ago. I've reviewed it somewhat myself, and I'm planning on meeting with Ann Wright to go over it again. And then my plan is to meet with the director and some of the staff people there to verify that their aspirational plans are feasible and that we can feel comfortable going forward. Hopefully, that'll come out positive, and I have every reason to believe that it will, but we're doing a very diligent process of review, and if anybody wants to participate either in the meeting that I have, the workshop that I'm going to be setting up with Ann Wright, or the meetings that we're going to have with them, please let me know, and we could notice it, we could all do it together, or we could do it individually, but that's what I'm doing.
Great. Thank you, sir.
I'm done. Thank you.
Jesse.
Yes, I'm excited about the food truck park. I think it's going to be amazing for downtown activation. I'm very glad we moved forward with that today. I'm counting on Magnus's to come through for us, and I think they will. And I think, you know, something that's going to be ready in two years is going to be very good for activating that portion of downtown that we've already spent so much money on, so I'm excited for it. I would say that the Wonder Gardens, I love that you're involved in that. That's something, as you know, I toured that not too long ago. I met the new director, I enjoyed him quite a bit. You know, there's still some lingering issues, as you know. As you move forward, that, I kind of like to preferably be involved, but I think you running lead on it is great. One thing that I did give to Arlene, and I think she took it to the director, was that, you know, one of the ways we could have mitigated this problem from a city standpoint is monthly staff meeting with somebody in our staff and their director, so that anything that they get in regards to procurement, donations, any type of development, and then actually looking at the new things that he set up in regards to quantifiables for all the various departments, we didn't have that before. So if we're meeting with him on a monthly basis, you know, and they get, you know, X amount of dollars for something in January, and then March, nothing has materialized, you know, on a staff level, we might have caught it. You know, we're hopeful the board does their job, but in the situations where they do not, we need to be able to ensure that we're picking up the slack and being good stewards of dollars. So I think a safe fail of having a monthly meeting with staff is probably a good way to do that, and then if anything ranks above a five, staff lets us know, you know. So yeah, once again, I think you running lead on, that's great. If I can be of any help, let me know. And CBDG funding, again, you're absolutely right. I think that's a great, it's very hard to fund that, and that would be a very good priority for us, so I agree with you on that. I've been, I was out with FGCU folks last, I've been out, you know, three times since we did the contract. I was out last week, and as I sent you guys an email, we had a dead manatee, unfortunately, in the waterways. We have been in coordination with Florida Wildlife, and when we get autopsy results, we'll hear more about that. City Hall, I went and I toured City Hall, I sent you guys pictures of that as well. That's coming along great. Honestly, it's a bigger, I knew exactly what we were doing in there, but if, as you can see from the picture, scale-wise, I was like, wow, like I walked in, I was blown away. It's not just a remodel, like we're rebuilding that thing, really. The developer himself pointed out a couple of things to me, Matthew, and Arlene, that were things that they didn't have to necessarily do, which I think were very good finds and benefits to us, to the overall quality of the structure. So I was very pleased with them. And then last but not least, we have EDC, Economic Development Council, tonight. So, you know, the chamber's got a lot of stuff going on, so that's always exciting to be at that, as we just voted on food trucks and all the other stuff going on. Economic development over the next four years is going to be, you know, one of the main priorities that I have, and I hope that we have a council, as council have to. So once again, Chris, congratulations. I'm looking forward to a great relationship with you moving forward. Fred, we've already had one, and Mr. Mayor, good luck.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Yes, dear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Magnus family, we're looking forward to what you produce, and all's good. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and all our new council people.
Thank you. Fred, Nelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of data on the great COVID virus. As of yesterday, Lee healthcare systems had 122 people in the hospital with the virus. But for those that have a memory of when we voted on masks or no masks in the city, they had 358 in the hospital on the 13th of July. So, but even though this is a much lesser number, they want everybody to know that they don't have a lot of space because of the snowbirds being back. There are a lot of people in there recovering from normal elective surgeries and sometimes unelected surgeries, other diseases, and so on. The other thing that's really interesting, they have cured 3,207 COVID patients cured. That's a big number. And so I just want everybody to know that that, and the other thing, it's because there is a lot of pessimism going around about COVID right now, if you do get it, the odds are you won't have to go to the hospital. But if you do, the odds are you're going to live, where back in May and March and April, you had a damn good chance of dying, especially if you had a health issue. If you do go to the hospital now, usually you're out of there within a week, 10 days is a big stay. Back when this all began, three weeks was not unusual, two weeks was kind of the norm. So everything's a lot better, and that's because the doctors know better what to do now, plus there's all kind of...
now, plus there's all kind of miracle drugs out, plenty available, which there wasn't even, didn't, some of them didn't even exist at the time that COVID started. So, I just wanted to give kind of a positive update on that. And went to a Florida League of Cities meeting in Orlando, and their number one priority again for this year is water quality. That's what they're pushing with the legislators up in Tallahassee when they have the session. And, and they're, they're wanting to hold the line on funding for water quality projects, or if there's going to be a cut, make it a minimal cut. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Now, I just want to congratulate the three that got reelected, and congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on your victory, and to thank everybody for your, you know, trust in me to be deputy mayor again. Thanks.
Mr. Corrigan?
Couple of things. Benita Bay completed about an 18-month project to add sand to our beach facility between the high-water mark on the beach and our dunes. That was done in conjunction with Lee County Department of Environmental Protection, who handles the permits. One of the things that's come up, that we learned during that whole process is that there is a lot of hotel tourism tax dollars that is allocated by Lee County for maintenance of the beaches, primarily around Fort Myers Beach, a little bit south of there, not too far, but there is, as I have found, there's no record of any of those tax dollars ever being allocated to the beaches of Benita Springs. I think the beaches of Benita Springs are one of the prime drawing aspects for our city, something we're all proud of. For those of you that aren't out on the beach that much, the problem is, is there's pretty, it's pretty hard packed with shelves. And so one of the things I'm going to be working on is trying to figure out how to work with Ray Sandelli and others to try to get an allocation of those hotel tourism tax dollars for improvement of the quality of our beaches down here in Benita Springs. Second thing I'll report is that one of the things I'd like to see in terms of making Benita Springs even more attractive a place to live, and a more attractive a place to do business, is to look at what other cities our size are doing with respect to becoming smart cities. And by smart cities, I mean things such as tying our traffic signals into computers where we can automatically adjust the amount of red light, green light time, where we can run our streetlights off of solar power that's maintained by a computer and so forth. Sarasota is going through this right now with Hotwire. Hotwire is the one that Benita Bay used and other gated communities, because they, they use a lot of fiber optic cable, which is the fastest, allows the fastest speed. So, I'm going to be sort of taking on that project to determine how we can better make Benita Springs a smart city when it comes to, to internet services and so forth that will really benefit businesses and residents going forward. So, just wanted to report that.
My turn. Benita Beach is a pristine beach. I suppose you ought to look that up, what pristine is. I did. That's, that's just, you don't have to respond to that. In 2019, 2,800,000 people died in this country. This year, 240,000 people died of COVID. We're making a big deal out of 250,000 people when we got 2.8 million people dying. We forgot about all of them. Easy math, let's say there's 300 million people in this country, and let's say they all live to be 100 years old. So, in the next 100 years, we'll have 3 million people die every year. So, let's not ruin the world and the freedom and everything else over this brand-new disease that has disrupted this whole country. As Fred said, we're better off than we were months ago, that we were able to treat this disease, and people are living through it. Let's not panic, so to speak, on a pandemic. What else I got to say? Okay, now, I have a challenge for your six districts. We have six districts. I don't have a district. I challenge each of you to come up with one person, a volunteer, that would evaluate your district as far as trash, sidewalks. Basically, you look over your whole district and report to you what they think the city could do to improve your district. Since they're all different, and you were voted and elected to represent your district, it turns out, to my opinion, that these meetings turned into seven mayors, where we should be six districts representing the people in six districts. That's my opinion. I don't know if I have to bring a green sheet or what to propose something like this.
Can you explain?
May we talk about this at the workshop?
We, we'll work with the mayor to put a green sheet together.
Okay, we'll bring it back to you. Thank you.
We're all one vote.
We have no minutes?
We have one minute. We have the minutes of September 16th. It's just a very brief.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Vote.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Do I need a motion to adjourn?
We have one more public comment, if there's any...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Seeing none.
Any other public comment? No? Come on, give me a break.
Nope, we adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
We, we, we work for you all. Come on, let us know what you want.
Do you want us to hand in the green sheet, 346, today, Debbie? Signed?
Yes, please. If you signed it, just give it to Debbie.
Okay, so everybody, our vote of conduct.
Yes, and please, if you...
Green sheet, 346.
If, and if you haven't, for all the, the members who redid your oath today, please remember to sign the oath form.
Um, yeah, I've seen this one. Which green sheet is that one?
It was the cover sheet. I think you did, and you know, the best.
Oh, here.
Okay, you ready?
Oh, no, you can. Good luck.
Chris, thank you for your...
I emailed you one already.
If you wanted to...
What is this one?
Yeah. Congratulations, Representative...